How many of you parents wish you had that when your kids are talking? Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council, during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chambers presented to the city clerks. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. We're going to convene the regular meeting. It's city council Tuesday, February 11, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. tonight. We're going to be closing. Mayor Pro Tem, you want to talk about the person who we're honoring tonight?
This evening, we'll be honoring Eric Lopez. He was a Grand Terrace resident, and he was a high school principal in Baldwin Park, who tragically lost his life in a car accident here on the 10 freeway.
Thank you. In the last council meeting, we closed in honor for Ann Pettah, as we say, our founding mother of Grand Terrace. So tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Mike Leno from Azure Hills Seventh Day of Venice Church, and Councilmember Allen will be doing the pledge allegiance. So please stand, and Pastor Mike, please come to the podium.
Our loving God, we are grateful for this place we call home that you've given us to live and to work in. I thank you for those who are gathered here to do the business of the Grand Terrace community. Bless us, Lord. Give us extravagantly of your grace, your wisdom, and your justice. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mike. Thank you, Councilman Allen. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item A, reordering or additions or removal of any items on agenda? Do we have any, City Manager?
No additions or deletions.
Council, do you have any you want to remove? Okay, well, close item A, open item B, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restrictions contained by California law in the city. Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond. The statements made or asked questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff. Questions arise during the public comment or may request a matter be agendized for a future meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes. Don Halwachs?
Council members, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to lend a formal invitation to you all to commemorate Ann Pettah's life. She passed away on February, excuse me, January the 26th, and her memorial services will be on the 21st at 9:00 a.m. at the Montecito Mortuary. You're invited, and afterwards, at 11:30, all her friends from all the historical committees and art shows, council members past and present, are invited to a memorial luncheon at the senior center. Thank you for making this available to us. It means a lot to Ann. She spent a lot of time with the city on the historical committee, doing many of the cultural events. And for all of those here in the audience that knew Ann, neighbors and friends, you're invited too, Bobby. You're all invited. So I look forward to seeing many of you at the senior center for lunch, and if you can make it to the memorial center, or the memorial service starts at 9:00 a.m. on Friday. But lunch, remember that, 11:30, that's more accessible. So thank you kindly for your time. I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you, Don, very much. Ann was a beautiful lady. And, I mean, Councilwoman Wilson, did you have something you wanted to say? No? And we're looking forward to honoring Ann that day, and we really appreciate the invitation. We have another one?
Next one is Bobby Forbes.
Ms. Forbes?
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor and Conrad, City Manager, for helping on Saturday night with an incident with a dog. They had to be alerted, there was an emergency situation, and I thank you for handling it so quickly that night. It was really important, and thank you. And also, as an FYI, I forgot to say thank you. Mount Vernon looks awesome going over to High Grove, and I know everybody complained when it was happening, but it looks great. You can see the lines. It looks really nice now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
No more public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And a special presentation. Certificate of recognition for the Grand Terrace High School Ladies Titans Cheerleader Competition. Is that why you ladies are here? I thought you just wanted to hear us and see what government's like. You know you got to do a cheer before I give you guys their certificate, right?
Yeah. And you want to do a cheer?
Okay, so Group One Certification Recognition, Grand Terrace Lady Titan Cheer. Cecilia, you want to go ahead and tell us what your group does and tell us what competition they did?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, members of the public. My name is Cecilia Contreras. I'm the cheer coordinator for the Grand Terrace Titans Junior All-American Football and Cheer. With me tonight, we have our Commissioner Wendell Fields, our President Hayward Robinson, and our Vice President Letitia Jackson. And next to me is our Assistant Cheer Coordinator Alicia Lewis. And we all work very hard, countless hours, to be able to give our girls a great season. So first and foremost, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for taking the time to recognize the girls' hard work that they put in this last season. We start at the end of July and go through middle of November. We have practice three days a week, games on Sundays, where they cheer for their teams, halftime routines and everything, and it's a lot of work that these ladies put in, and we are extremely proud of them. On November 10, 2024, our cheerleaders took part in the Southern California Junior All-American Cheer Competition at the Inland Empire 66er Stadium. With over 1,000 cheerleaders performing, it was an incredible event. Each of our teams dedicated six weeks of intense practices leading up to this day, and their hard work was evident. We are incredibly proud of every one of them as they competed against squads of their same size and same age group. Our tiniest cheerleaders are mascots, which are four, five, and six-year-olds. While they don't compete, they do get to perform, and they also put in just as much time out of practice as the older girls do. They do get to leave a little bit earlier, about 7:30, because, you know, attention span, but they are out there working just as hard. Those are our little ladies. So I'm excited to share that after the hard work that these ladies put in, and we could not be more proud of them, our junior micro team placed third, our micro team placed fourth, our junior Pee-wee team placed first, and our Pee-wee team placed first as well. I would also like to recognize our coaches that are out there with us, our volunteers, Rashia Stanfield, Lois Johnson, Nicole Pender, Nicole Awas, Liz Mata, and Catherine Mendoza. These coaches are out there with us day in and day out. They're out there teaching the girls new things. We come up with the routines, and we have to work with them out there on the game days and everything, and we're volunteers, so having them dedicate their time out there does mean a lot to us, too. Our Pee-wee team was also invited to participate in a showcase, at the Colton High School Showcase, which is our oldest squad of girls, and they went out there and they performed their competition routine right next to the high school cheerleaders. So they competed, they were not competing, they were showcasing and representing Grand Terrace against Colton High School Pep Squad, AB Miller Pep Squad, and they were just as well out there. They even did little competitions of stunting and tumbling and jumps, and they held their own, and I couldn't be more proud of our ladies. So again, thank you tonight for taking the time to recognize the work that these girls put in. We couldn't be more proud, and we're extremely excited to be here.
Well, thank you. Council, have any questions? I have a couple of questions. So what does it take to be our cheerleader? I mean, how do you sign up? I mean, you know, for other little kids? I mean, I don't want to sign up. You guys don't want me out there. If I move wrong, my bolts will fall off my neck and stuff, so I don't know.
Sign up starts in around March, April, and you just have to be five to 14 years old and ready to go out there and have fun and cheer with us. You don't, we're an amateur group, so we're ready to teach all the new things. So if you've never cheered before, that's okay. We've even had some 14-year-olds where they've never cheered before, and they loved it. They came out and they did great.
Okay, so what's the cost?
The cost is $3.75. $3.75.
Now, you know our city has community benefit fund to help offset the cost on this.
Wait, what?
Yeah, so you just got to... The lady with the check right here, Christine, you see her, and you fill out the stuff, and that way, you know, there's a certain limit, but you know, it helps to offset stuff. And then, like, if you guys have camp or something, so that's what the city of Grand Terrace wants to do for our youth.
That would be wonderful. We keep our costs reasonably low because we know, you know, we're working families, too, so we want to make sure that the girls participate, to be able to participate, so we keep our costs low. But we do fundraising to be able to do the extra things for them, and our parents go out there and they help fundraise. But, you know, I'm more than happy to come and speak to who I need to speak to so we can get more for our team, for our girls.
The boss, yes. Okay, and so I want to invite you guys to participate in our Grand Terrace Parade. All right?
Wonderful.
And then, you can even see Mr. Johann over there, he's part of that, so. And then also, Mr. Hayward, the football team, too. They're invited, too. You just can't tackle anybody on the street, though. Otherwise, I'll have to wear a black and white shirt and throw some, you know, flags out there or something, but we would love to have the youth out there cheering and walking. It's not that far of a walk, but you know, we're trying to bring back the old town spirit, you know, and stuff.
I think that's wonderful. I think that's great. We'd be more than happy to participate.
It'd be our honor if you could do that, because I know the high school cheerleaders will be there and stuff, so. But it'd be great if you guys could do that, so.
Yeah, true.
Mr. Hayward knows how to get ahold of me. I'm just a phone call away or, you know, things, so.
Thank you.
But we want you guys to be there, and we want to take care of your youth, too, so, you know, you're very special for us. So we have a certificate, so we'll bring you up here, but before that, I don't know if you want the girls to cheer before or after we give them this.
Oh, he really wants to cheer. Okay. Okay. Do you want to bring them up here? Maybe we're going to come over here, and you guys can do a cheer. What are we doing? One, two, three.
That's all right. I don't practice as the mayor either. I just come up here and wing it, so. Now, we could have them cheer every time we pass an agenda, that'd be great. So before we stand up there, let me just read one of the certificates. A city Grand Terrace Certificate of Recognition presented to the cheerleaders here for your performance and participation in the 2024 Southern Cal JAA Cheer Competition held on November 9, 2024. Congratulations on your achievement. Presented on the 11th day of February 2025. Myself and my fellow councilmembers sign it, and we also have a pin for you. Now, girls, we're going to give you this pin. Don't give it to your mom and dad to try to get out a speeding ticket, because it won't work, okay? Because my wife tried to do that, and it didn't work, so no, just not really. But, Council, can you join me?
Okay, so ladies, as I call you up, you're going to come up here, and then after you shake everybody's hands, please go line up over there so we can take a picture. Okay, and first up is Kennedy James. Okay, next up is Reagan Mata. Giselle Peña. Laney Pender. Reagan Reese. Stella Richardson. Jasmine Williams. Natalie Awas. Autumn Amador. Larry Johnson. Zion Banks. Jaeha Clayton. Gianna DeGidio. Leila Damat. Amila Gill. Michaela Harper. Kennedy Molina. Sarah Ornalis. Isabella Williams. And so now we're going to announce our Pee-wee squad. These were the girls who participated in the showcase, and they're also going to be receiving a patch tonight. Abrienne Delgado. Sanaiah Lewis. And last but not least, Brooklyn Willis. One, two. One, two.
We should have did the presentation after we did the agenda, so that all you kids see what we do here, but. But I know you guys probably all have school and homework, and parents have a busy day, so we're going to go and take a five-minute recess, so that way you guys could go home and relax. And thank you for coming out, and thank you for representing Grand Terrace, and we would love to see you during the parade, and the football team, too. And like I said, if you guys ever need anything, the city's here, and please let us know, and, you know, thank you and God bless. So five-minute recess. Mayor Pro Tem comes over here. I thought maybe she took off with the cheerleaders. We're going to go ahead and reconvene at 6:30. The next item on the agenda is... What is the next? Consent counter item D. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-contributive, so they may be acted upon by the city council. Anyone time to discuss any? Councilmember, staff member, or citizens may request removal of any consent item calendars. Is there any public comment on any consent item?
No, sir.
Okay, so what I'm going to do, I need to, I have some questions on the consent counter for items five, six, and seven. So do we have a motion from one through four? Or would the council like to remove any ones, any for comment? Anybody want to talk about any consent calendars?
Item number five.
Oh, you have five, too? Okay, so I need a motion and a second from item one through four.
Motion for approval.
Second.
A motion, Councilmember Wilson, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brown, what was your question on item five?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually didn't really have a question. I just actually wanted to thank Conrad and his team for their quick work in putting together this fee waiver program. I've already had some feedback from community members who've taken advantage of the program, and they complimented city staff for their assistance in facilitating the fee waivers. I also wanted to share with the public that I was contacted by a resident who was concerned about triggering a reassessment if they pulled a permit, went through that process. They didn't want to have their property taxed raised. So I reached out to our county assessor, Josie Gonzalez, and she had her staff look into the fee waiver proposal that the city put forth, and after their staff reviewed our fee waiver program, I was informed that the only permit that would potentially trigger a reassessment would be for a permanent generator that's fixed and installed, that would be hooked up to natural gas, that would automatically kick on in the event of an outage. And so the rest of the fees, they didn't have any concerns about any reassessment issues, so no one should be concerned with having their property taxed raised if they're having their roof repaired or fixing a fence or, you know, having a generator installed. So I just wanted to share that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Oh, I forgot to reclusive myself from one of the check items. 82035. It was for my medical reimbursement, so. Okay, so, thanks, Matt. So my question, you know, I'm glad Councilmember Brown brought this up and City Manager made it official, and, you know, because one of the things we hear all the time, especially when we raise the permit costs, is the city does this to make money. Conrad, do we make any money off permits?
Off building permits? Oh, yeah, we make money off them.
Are we, are we making a fortune?
No. The permit, the cost from the permits, we're not allowed to make a profit from it. So the cost of the permit is to offset our expenses, issuing the building permit, doing plan checks, the inspector to come out and do inspections, all of that piece. So building permits is not, not a pro, we're not allowed to make a profit, and from a practical standpoint, we actually don't break even. We subsidize building in the city, and it's not a bad thing, because we want the city looking good, we want a fresh housing stock, we want houses to be updated, modern, with a decent value, so it is a reasonable investment. But yes, yes, we do make money, but we spend more money than we make.
All right, I just want to get that rumor away from there, everybody saying that we raised the permit costs so we could put in our general fund and make money.
We raised the permit costs so we get a little closer to breaking even.
Okay. And then on that one, one other question I have is on section two on page 79, you have the council of the City of Grand Terrace hereby waiving building permits from January 21st. Well, actually, our storms start coming around January 7, and some people start getting stuff repaired on January 8. Can we move that to at least January 8 to January, or July 22nd?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that, and I want to clarify, too, that staff has not been waiving fees. What we've done is defer the fee until final inspection.
Exactly.
On the, the hope that, the intention that the council will approve retroactively the fee waiver, but we can pick any date that makes sense.
Yeah, I just want to do it where it was closer to, and we had the windstorms, because some people went right out there and took care of stuff like roof repairs. So if they did do these roof repairs, and they did all this right now and paid for their permit fees, they would just have to come back for the city to get a check reissued to them? Or how's this working?
If they have already paid for it, they would need to show that it is storm-related somehow, and then we would reimburse them for it.
So putting a new pool isn't storm-related?
Putting a new pool is not storm-related, updating your solar panels, a complete re-riff that you're planning on doing anyway, but we're trying to be as reasonable as possible and not make it difficult.
Now, getting off the little bit of the subject there, so when people are, the contractors are doing this, are contractors allowed to dump waste in our dumpster?
No, that's a residential dumpster.
Okay, so if we do see them, we could start ticking them or even doing a thing on their... Okay. So, if we do see them, we could start taking them or even doing a thing on their license?
We can cite them for illegal dumping.
Okay. All right. Councilman Allen, you had a question?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I just wanted to ask the city manager, I remember the, when we did the, we were talking about building permit fees, and I just wanted to add one thing is that the last time we did the fee restructure, a lot of people had some real heartburn with it. And the reason, I believe, was because it was, it was, some of them were pretty steep. They seemed to be. But it brought them in line with what they should have been. But you and I, we had this discussion about how, that we had gone so long without a readjustment that that's what made them. And so, I would just offer the suggestion that we try to do them a little more periodically so that they're less painful and don't draw so much attention. That's all.
A standard practice is to do it every five years. And I believe we had gone, somebody stop me if I'm wrong, but closer to fifteen years.
Yeah.
Between the last assessment and, you know, discounting the price of eggs, but look at the difference in just groceries as a whole over the last fifteen years versus the last five years.
Yeah.
It was a substantial jump because we were so far behind. And from a practical standpoint, your tax dollars were subsidizing people's permits to remodel their houses.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I wanted to.
Council, have any other questions? So, I'll make a motion, but with the amendment to, on section two, from January, well, the storm starts seventh instead of January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five till July twenty-twenty, July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. Have a second?
Second.
Just to be clear, so it's January seventh?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is that all you have, city attorney? Okay. I know you wanna earn your money today and you had to say something.
Yes, yes, I could speak more if you'd like.
Okay.
But nobody wants to hear from an attorney, so.
As long as you don't do a cheer, we'll be all right. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. So, item six I pulled because, and I wish Ms. Pettis' family was still here. But we're doing a waiver, but I love the background on it, and I will ask Councilmember Wilson if he could read the background on this.
Ann Pettis was a friend of mine. She was, we've known each other for over fifty years. And it's only appropriate in this instance, because of her graciousness and her husband's graciousness, to dedicate a parcel of land to the city that, and we worked long and hard with her, with her to be able to accomplish this, even though she was ninety-five when we started. And she passed away at the age of ninety-seven peacefully. It was a great thing that, that she and her husband did, and the friendship that we had was just irreplaceable and, and is. And I think it's only appropriate that we cooperate with each other in the spirit that Ann was so gracious in by waiving this park use and, and waiving the fee so that they can hold the memorial. All of Grand Terrace has been invited, basically, and, and I think this is completely appropriate use. So, I have done some genealogical work for, for the family, and it's been a privilege, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to say anything on this item? Because I really love the background about Angelina Ann Pettis passed away in peace, which is a blessing. She was born October nineteenth, nineteen-twenty-seven, in Blue Island, Illinois. And she was married to Anthony, Tony, and they had a precious daughter named Susan. That's what Susan Pettis Park's name after. God took her way too early. She loved her family, friends, and community members. And her personal phrase was, "Love thy neighbor." And she did love her neighbor. You know, she loved the city of Grand Terrace. And I was telling her, the gentleman that was here, Don, that I always remember Ann doing that work at the Historical Society, and she had those ladies, and it was a well-oiled machine. And I remember one time Mr. Duffy tried to mess with that well-oiled machine, and that was a bad mistake. And she was a little spitfire. She reminded me of my Italian grandmother. So, I was like, "You better just stay away, Mr. Duffy. Just leave it alone." Because, but those ladies put on a heck of a thing, and, and they worked, and they loved the city. And Ann and her husband, Tony, like I said, the founding, you know, couple of our city, did so much for us. And, you know, graciously donated property. She talked to Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Wilson on that, and she wanted that property. So, one day, the city will have a civic center and a new library in her honor. One day. So, that dream will happen. Don't know when, but it will happen. But I guess Tony, was he a barber too? Yeah, so he would go there and cut hair and sell you a car or sell you a house at the same time, right? So, everybody has a lot of memories here about the Pettis, and it's a blessing. And it'd be a blessing to show for her memorial service. So, with that, Councilmember Wilson, would you like to make a motion for item six?
Mayor, if I might add.
Go ahead.
Every picture on these walls, Ann knew every person. You know, some of them have passed away since, but she knew every person in this, in this gallery. She was a great lady.
Very great lady. And she knew who you were. Jeff, did you wanna make a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a first and a second by Councilmember Wilson and Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, so item seven, removal of deceased animals on private property. I don't think I read anything here about the wild burrows. Who's gonna be responsible? I think, remember, we talked about having the city responsible. I don't think a resident should be responsible for removing such a large wild animal from their property.
Says, "Removal of deceased stray or wild animals."
Okay, so.
No feed.
We didn't, yeah, I saw that. So, it doesn't matter what wild animal, as long as it's a...
Could be buffalo or elephants.
Well, hey, a transaurs rex. But if we have a wild-burled burrow that passed away and somebody, and like before Christmas, we had those two, and that one suffered a couple of days and went in somebody's backyard. And of course, it was a weekend we had to wait, but how do we make sure that the, the resident isn't responsible to get that burrow from their backyard to the street? Because that's, I don't wanna put somebody in jeopardy. Can we have them sign a waiver that will go into their yard and get that? Especially that wild animal?
That, that is the, what we would bring back to you is a, your direction to bring back a program that has liability mitigation measures in it. So, they would have to sign a waiver. Also, theoretically, if that, we'd have to maybe disassemble the fence, that there'd be some waiver that they would be responsible for any restoration or damage. Because, you know, the burrow, we don't pick up a burrow and carry it out on our back. That thing gets dragged out.
Yeah.
And it, it, so part of that would be the program is looking at our liability limitations on that. And then I do wanna correct, any deceased wild animals, we will not pick up mice. We will not pick up, you know, goldfish and those kind of things. So, we will be reasonable in the...
Go ahead, Councilman Allen.
I know what we will pick up, though. I know what the city manager will pick up. And that's a rattlesnake, 'cause he did it up in Honey Hills, didn't you? Rattlesnake wrangler you are, you are. I know you are.
Did you eat it?
No, I turned it loose. I feel bad about killing it. People, some people catch him and kill him, would just find it someplace that's a little bit out of the way and turn it back. It's an important part of the...
Was it a red diamondback?
I don't know about red. It was about three feet and was...
Oh, you didn't get that close? Was it a male or a female?
You know, I wasn't that, I wasn't that close. But you're, you're within about three feet, so I'm close enough to, to be friendly.
No. So, any, so if a coyote comes in the yard or a possum or something like that, the city will take care?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Wild animals.
And I know, is this about the fees on here too? Because we talked about if, what happens if somebody has, somebody's dog that's not theirs came in their yard? That resident should be, shouldn't be responsible for a stray dog that passed away in their yard?
So, deceased stray or wild animals?
Okay. I just wanna make clarification. I know it's there, but just to get clarification. And then if we have a person that does the correct way, that gets their dog's license, can there, and they need help getting their dog picked up, and we know it's their dog, can we do some other kind of waiver for that? Because they did everything the proper way, kinda like initiative to get, make sure their dog's licensed?
So, you're asking us to waive a fee if the dog's licensed?
Yes.
To dispose of it?
As part of a service that the city will provide while their dog is licensed, to give initiative to have people get their dog licensed.
If that's the direction the council chooses to go.
Well, I would like to put that in there.
This would be beyond what the neighboring cities do. And I wanna clarify, and the, whatever, have your children tune out for a second. We're talking about dead animal disposal. So, we don't show up with a silk pillow and, and carry Fluffy out. This is a disposal service.
Yes.
So, if this is your, your animal and you're, feel strongly about it, and it's part of your family, you probably don't wanna call us to dispose of it.
Exactly.
You wanted to dig a hole in the backyard and put a rosebush on top of it, take it to the vet, they do cremations. We, we're here performing a different task.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point because, you know, we're not gonna be doing, you know, ceremonial thing is to remove the dead animal. And there's, you know, because a lot of these animals are people's pets. They're, they're family. And, you know, but yeah, just so if we needed to help somebody who has no means of getting their animal, their pet, and they're gonna be told this is what we're doing, but, you know, just give them that option. If they are a responsible pet owner, and also make sure that their dogs were licensed and vaccinated and stuff.
That, that would be up for you to, you as a group to direct us.
Okay. Councilman Allen, you had a question?
Do you, do you know or have any information, is it a substantial number of animals, you think, like, that, like pets that would be called upon, or?
No, if Ms. Forbes stops calling me, we won't have anymore. But no, that's, I don't know what the average is, but I know a couple of times I went out there and picked up stuff for people, you know, that couldn't get it. But I don't think it's a big number.
Yeah. Okay.
Conrad, do you know if it's a big number?
I, right now, it's not a big number. Once it becomes a free service, I don't know.
Okay. So, do you recommend it being a free service or just keep it the way it is?
I, I see our, our neighbors have it free for strays and wilds, so I think that that's, you know, is reasonable. I think if this is your pet and part of your family, there is a, a cost of pet ownership. And if it's part of your family, you, you do not want me to pick up your grandpa with a shovel, toss him in a trash bag, and put him in the freezer in back. You also don't want me to do that to one of your family members as a pet.
So, if, as a PR from a little old lady from Pasadena that just moved in, and she has nobody to help her pick up her pet, what will we do?
We, we could work with her. And there is, you know, I don't think thirty, acceptance of deceased animals, if they, if they have it for us, we can look at the different fees. We can look at fee structures or something. We can look at a financial hardship clause in this, so that if somebody really does have a financial hardship, because part of the, the fee is, we can't just, just like the building permits, this isn't a moneymaker for us.
Yeah.
This is to recover our cost. I mean, somebody, there, there's time for staff to come out there to pick up the animal, to put it in the freezer, to dispose of it, to haul it off to the rendering plant, to, I mean, all of the stuff that happens in that. There's, this is cost recovery.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I'm just trying to get some clarification for everybody.
But if, if there's a financial hardship component you want us to consider, we can consider that as well.
Well, I would consider to make a motion for a hardship component and then keep the fees the way they are. And you do it on a case-by-case basis. But before we do that, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
I had Bobby Forbes raising his hand. Bobby, do you wanna fill out your form before? Okay, Councilmember Brown?
Conrad, under our contract with the City of San Bernardino for Animal Control Services, is this ninety-dollar fee for removal stipulated in that contract if our residents call them?
They call San Bernardino? Yes. So, we're, we would then, you know, we're proposing an eighty-five, so we'd be in the ballpark.
Okay. So, we would be subsidizing that service because San Bernardino would be performing that?
No, we would, we would be doing the, the service ourselves, which kinda shows the, what the cost, what the cost of doing it is. They could do it the same way, more or less.
So, is...
The same way we do.
City Animal Control then disposing of the remains?
Yes. You, you don't want me to get any more detail than that on the process.
Just curious about the process and the cost associated with it.
So, Conrad, if somebody, say the animal's not deceased and is barely alive, who do they call? Besides Ms. Forbes and us?
So, we have, and, and it actually went at live this morning, but we were gonna announce it as part of my comments later.
Okay, well, I just thought maybe this would be a good time to comment.
So, our, our telephone tree, so you call the City Hall, nine-five-four-five-two-zero-zero, and hit number one. Number one will take you to the County Sheriff's dispatch. They will dispatch the appropriate, either if we're on duty, city staff or San Bernardino City Animal Control, and then we will take it from there. If you, if it's your animal and it's injured or something after hours, please take it to the clinic here in town. We're very fortunate that we have one. Other, other people bring them from Redlands and, you know, Yucipa to us. If it's not your animal, call Animal Control, and then we'll determine what, what happens from there. I think San Bernardino City can euthanize in the field. We don't. But we may take them to the clinic and then euthanize if it's not yours.
So, after hours, if they call the sheriffs, they will pick up the animal and take them over here?
The sheriffs will call whoever internally we need to do. They'll call San Bernardino City, they'll call our guys, they'll get me out of bed, whatever it takes to, to take care of it. But what we're trying to do is that if there is a call for service, we get it to a dispatcher who can then dispatch the appropriate person rather than trying to call City Hall, calling the mayor, calling me, calling, you know, and, and wondering how we do what. Just call that number, and we, we will, then it's up to us to get the right service to you.
All right. So, what's appropriate timeframe for this to happen when, once the call is made? Do we give them a time? So, the animal's not suffering that long?
It depends on how busy the officer is. It could be an hour, hour and a half. It could be two hours.
Say, Good Samaritan wants to take the dog to the animal shelter, I mean, to the emergency clinic because the dog's suffering, and it's a stray. How will we go about where the city maintains?
So, that if it's a stray, then it goes to the shelter, and then they need, they will, the shelter then will have to contact us for authorization to euthanize. And we, we flat out, once again, the ugly part of this is if it costs more to cure the animal than it is to euthanize it, we will euthanize the stray. So, we, we do not spend hundreds and thousands of dollars saving stray animals. I'm sorry, but that's, we, we have to, we have resources, and it's not the pretty part of the business, but it is part of the business.
All right. Well, thank you for answering those questions. So, I'm gonna make the motion where we put it as discretion to the city manager to waive fees if people are having, they can't afford the disposal and...
How about if we do that there, we'll come up with a hardship, hardship procedure?
Hardship?
I'd rather not have discretion, something that's clearly defined and...
Clearly defined as a hardship. What do you think, city attorney? What's the definition of a hardship?
It's however we define it, and we can, we can come up with something.
Okay. All right. So, that's my motion. Do I have a second for item seven?
Second.
So, I have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad, for answering the questions. Item E, public hearings, none. F, unfinished business, none. Item G, new business, future agenda, tree maintenance and removal assistance on private property, presented by Ms. Tillman. Oh, well, presented by Conrad.
Yeah, you got the less better looking one. Okay. There was a request for a future agenda item for tree removal and assistance on private property. Um, so we came up with some thoughts on what this would look like and some of the, the criteria that we'd need to look at before, before we move forward on this and, and part of what I hope shapes the council's direction for us on whether or not to move forward on this. So trees, trees are important to a city. You know, they're, they make it pretty, they provide a heat sink, they reduce pollution, they increase property values, they reduce crime, they create a sense of place. All of these things are, you know, really important to the econo- economic value of the city, and also a safer, healthier community, and really creating a, a better quality of life. So we are very strongly in support of trees. We spend thousands of dollars a year planting trees and maintaining trees, city-owned trees throughout the city. It's an important part of the city. And as we go forward this evening, we're going to talk about, um, mid, mid-year budget, and trees are on, are a substantial part of mid-year budget. So it is very important to us. I don't want to minimize that. But as we look at maintaining trees on private property, which is different than maintaining city-owned trees, so the tree, the tree on a private property, first we need to determine what, what the criteria is for, do we pick a tree, or does just a resident come to us and say, I want my tree trimmed? Is it impinging on a house? Is it causing damage? Or is it just something that's, they, they don't like, it's blocking their view? So we need to find some criteria for that. Um, we need to determine a, and, and when I say we, I'm asking direction from the council. We need to determine what level of services, if you call, do we trim the tree? And when we trim it, means five, seven, ten years later, we're going to trim it again? Or do we just take it out and it, it goes away? And then if it goes away, do you remove the stump and everything else? Part of the trimming portion and the services is, and I, I don't know if any of you ever taken out substantial trees, there's a lot of branches that come down. There's fences that get broken, um, sprinkler, you know, you drag the, drag the stump out, you drag the, the trunk out, sprinklers get broken, lawns get torn up, fences that get, you know, if it's in a backyard, get removed and reinstalled. All of these things need to be addressed on who's, who's responsible for it, what our liability is and how we handle that if we choose to go this path. Um, and then there's, how do we coordinate with the property owner? What, what is our, you know, like I said, site restoration and activities there? And then finally, is there any form of a cost recovery? Removing a, just a tree in the front yard is four, five hundred bucks a tree. Once we get into a slope, a backyard, something that's a little more challenging position, something that's leaning into a house, you know, leaning towards a house or a structure or across a fence or property line, these, these can run into the thousands and occasionally into the, you know, as much as ten thousand dollars to pull a tree. But it's not unusual to have really difficult trees to be in the thousands of dollars apiece to remove. So, um, is part of the cost recovery, is there a fee for this? Do we recommend the resident just to our arborist and kind of get them in the group pricing? Do, does the city have some form of cost sharing? Is there some reduced price that the city, city is willing to subsidize? As I started, trees are an important part of the community. Are we willing to subsidize some of that? And then are there ways to, um, either lean the property or put pendency on the property? I talked to the city attorney this evening, and he's, well, maybe, maybe, maybe not. We'd, something we'd have to explore. And then finally, if there's a cost recovery program, how do we monitor this? During the redevelopment days, we had, um, we were giving away money through redevelopment for people to repair their homes and do upgrades to their homes. And our payback rate on that was not what we, we would have hoped for. So there's a monitoring to make sure that we get that cost recovery. So all of these things are considerations, are open for discussion, and we're looking for direction if this is a program that the council wants to go forward with. And it's, it's a place for the council to have discussion and to provide as much information as possible to fuel that discussion. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I kind of feel like we're moving towards being an HOA here, um, with everything that we're, we're asking of the city. You stated that in the past, we offered loans without people paying back, without recovery, correct?
This, i- in the redevelopment days? There were loans that were forgiven, there were low interest loans, and then there were loans that just were not repaid. People sold their houses and moved on, and there was no way for us to recover those loans. That's one of the reasons redevelopment doesn't exist anymore. So it, it would be questionable whether we want to resurrect the practices that, that had failed in redevelopment.
As well as, we don't have a lot in our budget already to begin with. We have streets that can't be repaired and whatnot. And so those are concerns to me, especially for the residents that I've met with over and over again, where streets look like cobblestone. And so paying for someone's tree, it is a little bit difficult for me. It, and maybe as everyone else gives their input, I mean, maybe there's somewhere we can land in there. I mean, I know there are down payment assistance, government-funded program, however, um, the homeowner is required to remain in their home for so long, you know, over so many years because, um, those taxes help recover those costs or things of that sort. And so I would like to, if the body decides this is the direction they want to go, it has to be a viable program. It can't be at the expense of the city and continuing to move us towards a spiral. We've been great in remaining in the positive, I believe you said, over the last twelve quarters. We've been in the positive, and I'd hate for us to lose that momentum. And so that, that's my concern with this project. It's my concern with, um, with the continuing to, to put out our hands to, to do those things when we're barely able to take care of our basic daily needs. And so, you know, whether it's, um, the streets, uh, the sidewalks, being able to just cut the weeds down on Barton. And so where, where are we going to, what are we going to prioritize here? Is it going to be the homeowners? And will the city begin compensating for what hasn't been planned or anticipated, knowing that these trees have been on their property? So tho- those are my concerns there. Um, I'd like, that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Allen?
Well, thanks for that, uh, report, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate that. That's why I wanted it on the agenda, because, you know, the, the few residents that I've talked with about it, I'd say that, and I mean, the whole purpose that I asked for this, it wasn't to try to do, to, to try to, you know, do anything other than address those super big trees that are, could pose a threat to the city in some aspect, you know? And, uh, and like you said, I'll agree, because one of the residents that I talked with, the tree fits the description that you, you described it perfectly. It's an enormous pine tree leaning at a, you know, a fifty-degree angle and, um, well over the house, and it's an old, old, old tree, and it's been appraised to remove it at over five figures, over ten thousand dollars, you know? And so, you know, and I just, I thought, well, you know, there's probably less situations like this in our city than there are wild stray animals that need to be picked up out of people's yards, I would venture to say, you know? So I'm as cautious with our funds, um, as the next person, but I just wanted to throw this out, you know, to see, because I was asked this by the resident, you know, is there some way that we can, is there any kind of help, you know, any kind of grants or anything like that? So I just wanted to ask and find out. That's why it's on the agenda. So thanks for, uh, letting me know about that.
Councilor Wilson?
Just for reference, I've always gone on, on the, on the premise, if it's in a public way, it's the city's. If it's on private property, it's the homeowner's. And I think it's great that the city has taken upon itself sometimes to clear certain areas that might be interfering with the public way, but bottom line is, is that, uh, we have a responsibility as a property owner to maintain our yards. And, uh, we've got to get out of the, the concept of just throwing it back on the jurisdiction and always being taken care of by other people. And I know personally, when I've had some tree maintenance, because having been in the same spot now for about forty-five, fifty years, those trees grow up. And I've, you've had some nearby neighbors, you know, express problems, uh, because I've had tree limbs, you know, hanging over their house or whatever. And yes, does it cost money? It does. A lot of things do. Bottom line is, though, if it's on my private property, it's subject to California law. And if it's, uh, on the public way, then it's the city's. And if they made the decision to recommend a street tree to the developer that is just atrocious, uh, then that's something that they're going to end up having to deal with. And so as far as I'm concerned, private is the responsibility of the homeowner, public is the responsibility of the city, and I don't think the two of them should meet.
Okay. Um, no, I agree with, uh, Councilor Wilson and Mayor Pro Tem, because one other thing that gets to me is the insurance cost. That'd be on us, correct?
We would have, we would have to figure some way to mitigate the liability.
So we're opening up a whole Pandora box. So there is programs out there with Edison for trees by power lines. There's other programs out there for this, but, um, can we, I'm, I don't want to pay for somebody's tree, but can we, if a resident comes up to recommend our tree trimming service and do it at the cost that we get paid, that they pay, or just give recommendations so we don't have anybody just cutting trees? I mean, do, do we get, do they have to get a permit for something that large that's going to be endangering somebody?
See, we have no permit process for tree removal. So if it's a tree on your property, even if it's a huge specimen tree, um, you can remove it. Many cities do. Um, so we've, we've really taken that the tree is yours. And actually, one of the, the cost discussion items I had up there was, is that we can tuck this into the ci- the city maintenance program. So we do have a bulk tree trimming cost, and we, we trim a lot of trees. And so there is some volume discount that we can try and work with our, and, and this won't take council action, I think we can do this with, at a staff level, work with our vendor, so that if residents of Grand Terrace are looking for tree trimming from our vendor, that they can get the city rate.
Okay. Well, about the permits, so if a private resident hires to remove a big oak tree, and they bring in big equipment, and it damages our road and sidewalks, and we don't have no permit, how are we going to hold them accountable?
That, we litigate against them? That's the, the way, it, same as if they demolished their house or when they put in a pool and damaged the sidewalk and hauling out all the dirt. Um, we, you know, we, we follow up on them with a claim.
All right. So there is a possibility that we could direct them to our arborist and get at that rate?
We can explore that, and, and I don't, you know, it's, it's not a huge discount, but there is, there is a volume discount that we could, um, we could do that.
I agree with Mayor on that. I think that's a great idea. That's all I was asking about was any options out there for our residents, you know, and I think that's a great idea.
All right. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Just, and I'd like to defer to the city attorney. I, having worked in the public school system, I could never make a referral or a recommendation because there was an issue of liability, whether it was for cost, um, or damage. And so could you give us your input on, if we make those referrals, what is the city's liability for having made that referral?
Sure. A- a- anytime we give a referral, we're always going to be potentially on the hook. Now, that being said, I have seen some cities where what they'll do is they'll put a list together and make it available to the public, saying any, and we, we make it available to all, uh, tree companies to say, if you would like to be placed on this list for contacting purposes. We don't make a referral, but it's just for ease of reference for the public. I've seen cities do that, but we have a disclaimer in there that we're not making any references, and we make it, uh, the list open and able to be added on anytime somebody wants to be added to the list. That, that's as far as I would recommend.
So will that be licensed contractors that we make the referral?
You, you could.
Or just supply the information?
Yeah, I supply the contact information and that's it.
Does that sound good for the council on that?
Yeah, we would, we would make sure that they're licensed contractors before we put them on a referral list.
Okay. So what are you looking, well, before we do that, I asked to move on. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Can I, can I ask one last question?
Sure, go ahead.
Has, has any resident ever come to the city and asked this question, or am I the only person that's ever had this asked? Because if I'm the only one, then we can just move right on. I mean, it's just the, the handful that have, have talked with me over, over the years.
I don't, I'm really trying to think. If there is, there's been one or two over the years and, but not, there, there's not a lot of them, I think.
Yeah, it's because there's not that big of a call for it, but, okay, thanks.
So do you want to remove it and just move forward, or?
No, I think, I liked your idea of having the, being able to offer the resident something, you know? When they come, they, the resident who has no clue what to do, at least being able to offer them a, a choice of, you know, of, uh, service providers that they can pick from and, uh, can handle their needs, if that's all we, if we can't do anything more than that.
Just to give them direction.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may?
Go ahead.
One thing I'll note, though, is, is that process was before Yelp, and now you can simply go on Yelp and do the exact same thing.
I know.
So I just point that out.
I, I know, and, and there is, I don't know how to Yelp. I have no idea, but, you know, but it's just another syrup. Here's a list of, uh, contracts. You guys could pick it. That's up to you, and good luck.
To, to what end will we continue to be a Google search engine?
No question. So what do you guys want to do? You want to squash this and good luck? Because the only time I was asked about a tree is when the Christmas tree, after the fire department closed the Christmas tree farm. That was it. I'm just telling you, that was the only time I was asked about a tree.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah. I, I just want to say, I completely agree with, um, Councilmember Wilson's comments, and I really can't support creating any additional liability for the city or wasting staff time on doing something that people can do on Google themselves and read reviews from their neighbors. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
And if we start here, where do we stop with other services? Are we going to start referring plumbers and so forth? That being said, I think this is going to be a, a larger issue, as county fire may agree, um, with the wildfire mapping of our city, uh, as far as homeowner's insurance goes, more and more insurers are going to look to homeowners to trim and remove trees around their homes. So this is, this is, it is going to be a, a bigger issue going forward. Um, and so I don't, I just don't think it's a, an issue that we need to get involved in and expose our taxpayers to.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, that's a good point. You made up a good comment, because that was one of the things, when they canceled my insurance, they wanted me to take all my trees down. And, um, so what does the council want to do? Do they want to make a motion on this, or they just want to stop it and then have the, and move from there and see what, uh, this residence can look on their own?
I'll just pull it, pull it back, Mayor. It, you know, it doesn't seem to be, um, striking the right chord here or making much sense.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would, I would suggest then that if that is a desire, uh, that the motion be to receive and file a report. Call it a day.
Okay. So Councilor Allen, you want to receive and file this report?
Sure.
Okay. I'll second the receive and file. Please vote.
Motion pass-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, with that, item nine, review of park and recreation committee membership, potential vacancies presented by, oh, Ms. Tillman.
Yes. Good evening, council. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. The following report is presented for City Council to review and confirm or reappoint members of the Parks and Recs Committee and to allow for its reorganization as necessary. Staff recommends authorizing the advertisement of any vacancies, including the vacancy under Councilmember Wilson. I'm not sure about that strikeout. I think that's just part of the design, so disregard the strikeout. But Mayor Bill Hussey, your current appointee is Mike Ho, originally appointed authority is former Mayor Darcy Magna Bo, and the action required is to confirm or reappoint Mayor Pro Tem Michelle Sabino. Current appointee is Hani Bennett. Original appointing authority is former Mayor Pro Tem Sylvia Robles Rodriguez. Action is to confirm or reappoint. Councilmember Jeff Allen. Current appointee Julia Ferncos. Original appoint, appointing authority, Councilmember Bill Hussey. Action to confirm or reappoint. Councilmember Matt Brown. Current appointee Brian Phelps. Original appointee authority, Councilmember Ken Henderson. And the action is to confirm or reappoint. And for Councilmember Doug Wilson, the position is vacant, and we will advertise and appoint if approved. So...
So, does the current Park and Recs Committee, do they still want to stay on?
Everyone is, has expressed desire to stay on.
And how often do they meet?
Once a month.
Okay.
Providing we have a quorum.
So, we just got to confirm that we want the same ones still there, and then Mr. Wilson's got to go find somebody tonight?
We would advertise for it, and then those applications would go to Councilmember Wilson.
Okay, so, don't be taking any bribes from the Girl Scouts on those cookies either. Okay. So, does the council have any questions?
Councilmember Allen?
Ms. Tillman, how long are the terms for the, the, that these committee members serve?
They stay until they're reassigned. So, if you were to select to reappoint, then of course, the positions would change, but they would stay on.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I don't mind, Mike, Mayor Pro Tem, do you still want Hannah Bennett on there?
Yes, I'll confirm.
Councilmember Brown, do you still want Brian Phelps?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint.
And Jeff, you still want Julia? Okay. Do I have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, so when are you going to be advertising the vacancy?
I can start tomorrow.
Okay. You're not going to be out here twisting the sign or anything?
No.
Unless you want me to. Well, thank you. Do I have any, city attorney, you have anything to add to that?
No, I just want to note for the record that all current commissioners are effectively confirmed for continuance on the committee, and that staff will renotice the appointment, potential appointment for Councilmember Wilson's seat.
Okay.
Is there a motion second just to confirm that statement?
I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, item ten, microchipping. Conrad? You getting your steps today, buddy?
That's right, the fat kid's getting a workout. Okay. This is an ordinance first reading for adoption of an ordinance that requires a microchip in conjunction with Brady's vaccine and the dog licensing. And a little bit of overview, it's, microchipping is a fairly common, simple procedure. It's a permanent form of identification. Basically, it's a device that's injected between the shoulder blades on the back of, of a dog, typically sometimes cats. We're looking only for dogs on this. And what that allows us to do is when the, the animal is lost and found, we can then scan the chip. It has a numeric code in it, and in our, look up our records and find that animal's home and owner and repatriate them. So, why, why is it important? It's, you know, basically, it's a permanent, unremovable dog tag, so we can find that animal. It wildly increases the chances of, of recovery and repatriation with their owners. You know, even if your animal's kept indoors, you open the door, it can make a run for it, and it gives us, gives us a chance to, to get it back home. About fifteen percent, only about fifteen percent of un-microchipped dogs in shelters are ever repatriated with their owners. And as a, as a bigger part of that, it's not just getting them repatriated, it's cutting out the whole shelter experience for them and the family. You know, it, it's, it's stressful for the animal to be captured, to be thrown in back of the vehicle, dragged down to the shelter, taken to someplace with other, you know, stray, lost animals who may be, you know, have other diseases. You know, if, if you want to get sick, go to a hospital. If you want to get your dog sick, go to the shelter type concept. So, we're keeping them out of that. It's keeping the stress away from the family, having to go search various shelters, both Riverside, San Bernardino, you know, the county, the city, to, to find their animal. And it brings, just brings them home quicker in a safer, in a safer manner. And what, did I miss something here? I think I got it. There is, there is a cost to it, and I think, I don't know if I put it in there. I had it earlier, and, and I'm sure Bobby knows better what the cost is, but...
It's fifty dollars to keep it inside. It's thirty-four fifty. So, it's, it's under thirty dollars per animal.
And, well, once again, if that's, if that's part of your family and you treat it that way, it's, you know, not that I advocate chipping your kid, but, you know, you would, you would certainly spend thirty dollars to, making sure your kid was safe. It's, you know, spend thirty dollars making sure your pet is safe and could get home. From a practical standpoint, it's not included in the ordinance, but what we would do is then begin requiring this, and I'm, I'm, once the ordinance is approved, to give a chance to spin up and just to, to break with the fiscal year on July first. And then, as new animals are licensed, they would be required to microchip. So, for the first two or three years, this will be a gradual buildup, and then, in an ideal world, everybody that's licensed in two or three years will also have a chip, and we can, we can get them home. You know, and it, it takes that experience from the animal gets loose, to going to the shelter for a day, and the family trying to find it, and, and all the uproar that causes, to, you know, the animal gets loose, we get them, and knock on your door and hand them back to you. And that's, that's, that's the two, the two paths we're looking at on this. So, staff does recommend adoption of this ordinance. And are there any questions? Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Conrad. If somebody has their dog chipped, but they don't remember the number, we just bring the dog in and get it scanned? Or...
We, we can scan, but when you get the chip, they give you the paperwork, and when you get your license, when you get it licensed, we'll, that paperwork, that number is recorded as part of the license.
Okay. Well, did you hear today that a dog-chipping company just went out of business called Save This Life? And they're having no database, and they're having a, a big issue? It came out today.
So, we're, we're, what we're doing as part of our licensing is not requiring you to register the animal with any database. When you, when you license your animal, we record the chip number. Then, when we get the animal, we can look at our database and find that. If that number shows up, we know where it belongs. We're not looking, we're not relying on outside services. If you choose to, with an outside service, that's great, because then if, if it ends up in Riverside County or the San Bernardino County Shelter, then they, they can get that number and look at that, find that in other outside services. But what we're looking at is the license, the number has to be recorded as part of our licensing process.
So, that won't affect us, then?
No.
Okay. All right, what a coincidence. Does the council have any other questions? Seeing none, leave it to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Bobby Forbes. Thank you. I think this is a good idea. And Saturday night, I scanned three dogs, one in Loma Linda, two in Grand Terrace. Two had chips. Neither one was registered. Couldn't do anything, including the one that I called you about Saturday night. And so, at that time, there's no information to get, and if they're not registered, you have to call the place that inserted them. And that company that just went under is not a company I've ever encountered in all of my years, and I've had a scanner for almost five years now. The biggest thing is, they have to do the registration with the chip. When they put the chip in, people think that at the shelters and anywhere they're doing it, that it's, it's in the dog, so it's registered. It's in the dog. That's all that's done. They need to call the company or go online and give their information. The little dog in Loma Linda had a landline. Well, that landline's no good, so we couldn't contact the people, but through networking today, I found that owner, and that dog went back after four days, a little thirteen-year-old Chihuahua. But he didn't know his information wasn't current, that he never registered that chip thirteen years ago. So, it is a really good idea, in my opinion. I get on people, I tell them that that makes that dog like losing your wallet. That's your dog once you microchip it. And that is really important, because if you see your dog down the street and your neighbor says, oh, no, that's my dog, my, we've had it for days or a week or whatever, if it's got a microchip, you can call Animal Control or the sheriff, and that's your dog, and they can be cited for stealing your dog. Totally different game changer, having a microchip in an animal than having a little dog tag that has your phone number on it. So, I think it's a good thing. The extra expense, you know, if you have a pet, you have to pay for things, and it's just one of those expensive expenses. I do think that Grand Terrace should offer seniors either a bigger discount or waive the fee for a senior to be licensing a dog. My mother lives in Centennial, Colorado. It's a big city. Anybody over sixty-five or seventy, whatever it is, doesn't have to pay for the license with the city for, to license their pet. Colton is cheaper than Grand Terrace to license, license an animal. But I think this particular program is good, and there's going to be some kinks to work out, but personally, I believe in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, does the council have any comments? Any directions? So, city attorney, you want a motion before you read this ordinance?
Yes, a motion to introduce and on first reading.
So, do I have a motion in a second?
Move the item. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Allen, city attorney?
Yes. The title of the ordinance for introduction this evening is as follows. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, amending section six point zero eight point zero one zero, dog license required, of Title VI Animals of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which amends the city's animal licensing, licensing and vaccination regulations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second, and, thank you, Conrad. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, mid-year and end-year budget review. This is by Ms. Clayton.
Good evening, council. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So, tonight, we're going to go over our mid-year and year-end review. The purpose of this is goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability. We're going to go over our proposed budget adjustments for the current year, if there are any, as well as year-end projections and mid-year actuals. So, for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five, as of December thirty-first, our general operating revenues were three point two million, or thirty-nine percent of our approved budget, eight point two million. Our operating expenditures under that same timeframe were four point four million, or fifty percent of our approved budget of eight point eight million. Now, of this approved eight point eight million, there were expenditures of over six hundred and seventy-six thousand that we carried over from the prior fiscal year. That's what increased it to the eight point eight million. And so, here's a comparison between revenues and expenditures, the approved budget, and then the December actuals. And I want to point out on the actuals, the revenue and expenditure difference, one point two million. That is a timing difference. Property taxes are received in two lump sums, December and April. Property taxes, VLF, vehicle license fees, those are distributed to us in January and May in lump sums. And our sales tax is paid to us by the county. We're two months behind, so they're paid, they pay us two months behind. So, as of December, we had been paid for October. So, I just want to point that out. It is a timing issue on revenues. We are not one point two million deficit. It is strictly a timing issue and a snapshot as of December thirty-first. Now for year-end projection. So, in the first column, we have our approved budget of revenues, the eight point two million. As of December twenty-twenty-four, we have three point two million. And for my year-end projection, I'm projecting the city will bring in almost eight point five million. That's an increase of two hundred and twenty-two thousand over budget. And the main line items are our sales tax, and then we have some use of money and property, and that's interest. And then now for the expenditures, the same format, approved budget, eight point eight million. Expenditures as of December twenty-fourth, four point four million. We're projecting nine point one million for expenditures for an over two hundred and eleven thousand. And I want to comment, on the nine point one million, that is additional expenditures, which I'll show you on the next couple of slides. Again, here's the layout, so that you can see everything all the way across. Approved budget, actuals, our year-end projection. And if we take our year-end projection versus approved budget, we're actually to the good of ten thousand dollars. And for year-end projection, if we back out the six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars that were carried over, we'd have a net income that would go into reserves of forty-eight thousand dollars. So, we truly do not have a deficit. I want to point that out. Again, here are operating expenses, four point four million as of December thirty-first. We're doing a projection of eight point eight million, or, excuse me, against the budget of eight point eight million. And here again, we had a carryover of six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Without that carryover, our expenditures would have been eight point four million. And there's the three hundred and three thousand of additional expenditures that we're going to propose.
So, why, why are our expenditures lower? We've done a great deal of effort across training staff, so we're able to be more efficient in what we're doing. We've, we've kind of broken our departments into pieces and, and scattered those pieces across multiple, multiple areas. So, the, the building staff is doing planning stuff, the planning staff is doing building stuff, and we're, you know, we're reducing the overhead costs. We put in some, last year, at mid-year budget, we added some security lighting at the parks. Our vandalism costs are down because of the money we put in. Part of that, too, is our cleanup costs, we put in the, the rail fence over there on Canal Street, so we were, you know, paying to do a lot of cleaning up and, and maintenance over there. So, some of these things, we've, these mid-year expenditures that we, you know, we use every year to do these pickup projects, we've, we've driven some of our costs down. We've reduced the use of consultants, and on top of that, increased our, our cost recovery work for, in the Planning and Public Works Group. So, when developers come in doing projects, you know, five, six years ago, the city paid for those consultants. Now, the developers pay for their own consultants, and we're doing a much better job of tracking our staff time, because the developers have to pay for our staff time, too. So, we're, we're doing much better on the cost recovery on that. We're using a lot of interns, and I, I think it's a great program. We've got the high school interns that were, we've got two of them here. we've got two of them here. We've got a couple of college interns out of engineering programs. So these, it drives our labor costs down, and we're providing a great work experience for these young people. And then, like I said, we're assigning the full cost to developer staff time as well as consultant time. So what we're looking for in additional expenditures is about three hundred thousand dollars. We have, we lock the parks at Pico and Richard Rollins. We lock those gates every night. We have volunteers that do that. For the most part, these are great residents. They've been doing this for years. It becomes kind of a burden when they want to go on vacation. We have to get our on-call guy to come in. Every time we call that guy, it's a couple hundred bucks at least for him to come in. And if, you know, our volunteers on vacation for a week or two, it causes a financial burden. And I don't want to take away from the volunteers on this. They have been phenomenal doing this work for us. But it's a way for us to secure our parks. We've done really well with keeping the homeless out and keeping our parks in good condition. This will continue that, and just automatic gates that close at sunset. And then, you know, we can open them in the morning. We're looking at tree planting in the right-of-way. I want to plant between two and five hundred trees this year. One of, you know, Grand Terrace is a beautiful city, but a tree canopy would add to that. And so we should have done this twenty years ago. And, you know, the old joke is, the best time to plant a tree was, you know, twenty, you know, twenty years ago, and the second best is today. So we will be looking to plant those trees and work with residents who are volunteering and looking for trees. We'll come up with a program where they can help pick the appropriate species in front of them and agree to maintain those trees. The biggest one that we're really looking at, though, is a gated parking area for staff over here on the parking here, the avenue between Palm and City Hall. One of the programs that our former Lieutenant, Brian, you know, blanking on his last name again, he's only gone, been gone for a couple of months. Lane, Lieutenant Lane. How soon we forget. Actually, a phenomenal program he did. You know, he's, he worked with Johan and the community on taking our annex building that we were using for storage, turning this into a sheriff's station. For us to get this truly up and operational as a sheriff's station, we need to be able to secure their cars after hours and secure, first the sheriff's private vehicles and also their duty vehicles, which we would have to do close to the station, so that would be the employee parking that we have now. We need to relocate our employee parking to a secure area, which would be that parking lot there between City Hall and Palm Street. With that, we'd need to put gates and fencing and secure that. It's too far away from City Hall to be safe to park those cars, especially what, you know, we've already lost a couple of catalytic converters there. And if we park the whole fleet out there, it's asking for trouble. So that's the biggest part of that. And then we're looking for some improvements at the senior center to secure the kitchen area, which is not secure at this point. Seniors are walking in and out of this kitchen area, which causes some hygiene and health and safety issues. And then there's also a coffee pot that we want to add a sink in some countertop so that they're not carrying hot coffee and water across the room. And, you know, I was watching somebody in a walker try to carry a coffee pot and a hot coffee. And I think that if we can do a little bit of work there, we can get these small improvements at the senior center to get them up. And we can do that at mid-year and get those projects done before July first. So that is what we're looking at for additional expenditures. And do you have questions for either one of us?
Where's Pico Park at?
Oh, I'm sorry, Veterans Park.
That temporary sign has been up there for fifteen years now?
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions? Any questions on the mid-budget? Now, you said we're two months behind on the budget, or the payment from the county?
Yes, we're two months behind on sales tax from the county.
They owe, what, a week's?
They just run in arrears. It's a constant running behind.
Can we charge them interest?
I wish. And then the same thing, that's why the state pays us in big nuggets. They hold the, their VLF and, you know, the float on, think about what the float for the whole state's VLF fees are, is a decent, you know, revenue source. But we do get these in large chunks. And one of the things that's important as we're going into the budgeting process, and we always talk about reserves. You know, going back to, you know, Christine had that number here. You know, we're looking at one point, one point two, almost one point three million dollars of money that we're due from either the state or the, you know, or the county. And for us to keep operating, that means we need to have a couple million dollars in reserves just to keep moving forward. So as we look at next year's budget, it's an important one to keep in mind that reserves aren't just rainy day money. That's money that carries us between, for the best analogy, carries us between paychecks so that we can continue our cash flow and continue operations.
So what's the guesstimation on our sales tax that we're generating? How much, how much sales tax are we generating? Are we still in the positive on this? It's like our...
We have had year-over-year growth for seventeen quarters, something like that, or fifteen quarters. We just had our sales tax meeting today. We have, on an actual basis, year-over-year growth. When, what we're fighting right now, and we will for the next four quarters, is that we had the sales tax that came in tied to the Condor project, which drove our numbers through the ceiling. So there's no way we're going to have year-over-year growth for the next twelve months. But our sales tax people are estimating that we'll be flat with maybe a little bit of growth. And we continue to budget, no matter what we get, a flat sales tax.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions?
So Conrad, is that two point one million dollar variance in sales tax revenue for last fiscal year from the Condor project?
Yes.
And so we're ending this year with two hundred and twelve thousand more than we anticipated then?
Correct.
That's our sales tax growth, Mayor? So if we maintain that for the next, I don't know, six years, we might be able to afford that deputy.
Assuming the price of the deputy doesn't go up.
Oh, I was just referring to one deputy, not all the ancillary costs.
So if we had that extra penny, how much more would we have gotten?
The extra penny in sales tax? What was that?
It was one point nine million.
One point nine million, yes. Which would have funded an extra full-time deputy.
Okay. So a couple more quick questions, just observations.
Before you go, sorry, you brought up the two point something million from Condor. We have that set aside in a separate fund. We're not treating that as real revenue, because the Condor project is going to revise, require some street work. And that money we have set aside for street work associated with that, that we're, that has to be done on our dime.
There you go. Cut me off, Conrad. I was going to ask what happened to that money.
Okay, sorry.
And I would expect that to, since it was one-time revenue, to be used for some type of one-time cost.
One-time revenue, one-time expense.
Okay. And, you know, bear with me, being new here, but, so it looks like we budgeted eighteen thousand for emergency operations and the senior citizens program. They're both, you know, from an expenditure standpoint, we're anticipating spending more than we budgeted there. Were those expenses related to our activation for the wind event and power outages?
Partially to that, and then partially, too, what I was speaking to as far as the minor modifications at the senior center, the sinks and securing the kitchen.
Well, the one thing I'll say, and I know it's, we'll have that conversation as we go into developing next year's budget, but if we're serious about emergency services or emergency operations and planning, from what we've learned this year, I think eighteen thousand dollars is insufficient, and we should put some money behind it. And so just keep that in mind. I'll be asking some questions about that going into building next year's budget.
You will be seeing a much larger number there next year.
And thank you, Director Clayton.
Maybe not directly in that line, but tied to emergency services.
Thank you, Director Clayton, for your work on this.
Jeff, Doug, do you have any questions? No? Do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, this is receive and file. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second it.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item twelve, General Plan Overview and Curbs Status, presented by Gabriel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and residents of Grand Terrace. Thank you for the opportunity to present an update and overview of the Grand Terrace General Plan, and just to go over some key elements and highlight ongoing efforts to update. First of all, what is a general plan? It's just the city's comprehensive, long-term plan for growth and improvement. You must think of it as the city's blueprint for future land development and planning. It's for Grand Terrace's vision of the forest future. And it's a policy document that has different programs that will work to achieve that vision. The general plan consists of eight different elements. The current general plan consists of eight different elements. Land use, circulation, housing, open space, public services and facilities, public health and safety, noise, and sustainable development. These goals, I'm sorry, these general plan elements, their key goals are designed to address accommodating growth on undeveloped land, developing infrastructure for both local and regional needs, promoting commercial development near major transportation routes, ensuring quality housing for all, including special needs housing, protecting safety and health, encouraging sustainability and energy-efficient development. What currently is in progress? The city has a professional service agreement with Michael Baker International to complete the preparation of a housing element, safety element, and the environmental justice element of the Grand Terrace General Plan. What does the housing element address? It addresses the current and future housing needs. It also addresses the future residential growth opportunities and highlights housing constraints. The housing programs that is within the housing element will commit the city to advancing housing initiatives. One example of that is permit-ready ADUs. The housing element is unique among the other elements as due to its state mandated requirements and need for regular updates. Also, streamlining ADU approvals. Streamlining ADU approvals will also induce the increased units, unit counts to the RENA requirement.
Can you repeat that last statement?
Exactly. So just to go over the permit-ready ADUs, that's just a program that incentivizes construction of more units.
I meant the very last statement, where you said it against the, did you say that the ADU counts against the RENA number?
No.
Oh, I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Right. Now, there's a key action associated with the housing element that is upzoning and rezoning of properties listed in the document. Rezoning and upzoning is associated with an environmental impact report. An environmental impact report can take to one to five years or more, depending on the project's complexity. The housing element identified seventy-four acres for rezoning to allow higher densities. And this will help meet the city's need, goal of six hundred and thirty new housing units this cycle. The housing element must be reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development for compliance. The city has received a conditional compliance letter, and Michael Baker International will be taking the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-nine housing element to planning commission on February twenty-seventh of this month and City Council on March twenty-fifth. Another important update is the public health and safety element, which addresses natural and man-made hazards. A key focus is the revision of the local hazard mitigation plan, which identifies risks such as floods, earthquakes, and wildfires. The housing element update triggered the need for revisions to the public health and safety element. In addition to these updates, we're introducing a new environmental justice element to the general plan. This element ensures that all communities in Grand Terrace, particularly vulnerable populations, are protected from environmental hazards by addressing issues like air quality, access to green spaces, and exposure to pollutants. Updating the local hazard mitigation plan ensures eligibility for federal disaster assistance and grants, promotes collaboration across city departments, and supports community resilience. The Grand Terrace Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, current one, has expired in August of twenty twenty-three, so Grand Terrace does not currently have a local hazard mitigation plan. There, we're engaging with public safety agencies, utility providers, and nonprofits in updating the plan. Our first stakeholder meeting was on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and we'll continue with smaller groups and discussions to ensure effective mitigation actions. In conclusion, the Grand Terrace's plan, the Grand Terrace's general plan, will guide our city's future and growth. And the update to the housing, safety element, and environmental justice elements show our commitment to a thriving and resilient community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. You know, one question about that mitigation plan, because myself and the mayor of Tampa and Councilman Brown, we did that online, the Zoom call. And there is a lot of non-residents here in Grand Terrace. Did they sign up for that Zoom call because of the tree lighting ceremony? Because, you know, I kept hearing Colton, Loma Linda, Colton, Loma Linda. And I know they're part of us, but I...
There are county agencies that have been included into the stakeholder list.
Not just regular residents from the area.
Right. There's not going to be residents that are included in those talks. It's going to be stakeholders such as city staff, you know, council members, and also, you know, utilities, and also county officials.
And there's another one coming up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my question. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, Councilman Allen?
Thank you for that report. On the housing element, I was reading the housing element. I wanted to ask you, first of all, the housing element that's on the, here, it's printed in, there's portions of it printed in red and portions of it that are not, that are printed in black. And I wanted to ask you, if you could tell me why the portions in red are in red? Are those new, is that addition, added, added information? That new have made me added to update, or?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
So, on the actual housing element, on...
Right.
Yeah. On page twenty-two of it?
Right, the infotainment.
Okay, it's printed in red and it's underlined, but not the entire element's not printed in red. And there's a statement there, and it says, let's see. And on this... It talks about the housing for seniors and it references Vista Blue Mountain. And it talks about how we have Vista Blue Mountain, and it gives the address, and there's a hundred units in there, and it's a dementia and Alzheimer's care. And that facility's been closed and gone for years.
Right.
And there's a new facility there, you know? And so I was, that's why I asked you about, because typically when I see a report, if there's something printed in red, it means it's new information or it's information being deleted.
Right. And so those comments and those admissions will be addressed on the upcoming Planning Commission meeting, the housing element, to be fully presented for your review and also, well, the City Council in March.
So...
So, you're looking at a draft right now.
Okay.
And this draft still has work to go before it goes before the Planning Commission on the twenty-seventh.
Right.
And then the final discussion will come back to you. Okay.
On the end of March.
So...
There is still stuff to work out, and if there are comments, please let us know.
Yeah, like...
So, we can get that as part of the draft.
Further on in the element, they're using homeless data, the homeless count from about six or seven years ago, and there's been a couple homeless counts down since then, you see?
Right. And data will be updated and have been updated and also going to be presented during those hearing dates.
Okay, so this housing element is not the final, this is, it's listed, it's titled as the latest and the greatest. If you look on the, it says, it's actually titled that. You got to click on the thing. It says, "The Latest and the Greatest Housing Element Report." Really? And so that's what we've got is, and this is, I'm just, you know, thought I'd bring up this information because it is old information, you know, it's, so...
I'm sorry, just for clarification, are you referring to from the website, the housing element that says draft May two thousand and twenty-four?
See this?
Right.
Yeah.
It says City of Grand Terrace Housing.
Second bullet comment down says, "Latest and greatest, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-nine draft housing element." Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, so the bottom, the footer says draft May two thousand and twenty-four, so it's a draft that you're looking at, correct?
The October two thousand and twenty-four draft. And I understand it's a draft, and that's why I was just asking about that. Is that information that's in red, is that what's being, is that new info? And that's why I was asking that, but I guess we'll...
I don't know at this time. We'll be able to answer that question when the housing element comes to hearing.
Okay, great. That'll be fine. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
And as you go over this draft, please let us know so that if we miss these things, we can catch them. Even if we think we've got them, let us know. We can make sure we've addressed it before we go any further. Thank you.
Okay, that's what I was doing.
Any overall, can you tell us what the sticky point is in relation to the timing on these things? Because it has the smell on it that it's something that we want to get done real quick.
Right.
But I do know that this is only a part of what's going to happen to the general plan, and the overall on it was, is probably going to take some substantial time, like two or three years, to evolve. So, because in my mind, reading even a rough draft, what are California legislators, and I think I've made this statement before, I have no love for our current governor and his policies. And I want to reiterate that what is in this is catastrophic to any kind of development within this, within the city. It prefers a concept of spot zoning, basically, which is just a no-no in the nomenclature when it comes to planning and zoning. And in the long run, we're talking about building multifamily, you know, forty to the acre right next to a residential, you know, tract. So, in the long run, this won't pencil. It won't pencil. There won't be any developers that will come running to the crown jewel of County San Bernardino to build because they're not going to be able to make it pencil because of what the state, and I'm not blaming anybody at our city level. What I'm saying is, is that everything that's been implemented in this is a result of what our state legislators have been over for. And especially good old Senator Weiner, you know, he has just made a complete mess out of planning and zoning. So, it scares the death out of me. So, I would encourage everybody behind the dais to look very carefully at what is being put in front of us as a housing element. I think it's been put together well, and I think, you know, the staff, I would congratulate the staff for all of its hard work. But unfortunately, we've got our hands tied and a gun to our head as we walk through the, you know, the place where we're going to get assassinated in this particular case, because it is, it takes away almost all of the local jurisdiction's opportunity to have a hand in development in its own community. So, please, take a look at it. All right, spend some time on it.
Right. And HCD does hand down those RINA numbers. From what I mentioned earlier, it's six hundred and some change. And also, the city has received the conditional compliance from this draft of the housing element.
Yes, I saw that, and they should, considering the fact we've been over for everything that they wanted done on this. Six times, by the way.
Yeah.
And it's cost us a fortune.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to ask Councilmember Wilson a message, or I mean, a question. If I hear, if I understand, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, right? Because I do understand what you mean when you say about how we've got these little parcels scattered all over the city and how, and I'm thinking about the developments we've got on the horizon down here by the freeway. These are, this is a large tract, and that's the kind of, that's what developers, if I'm understanding right, that's what developers are looking for, are large tracks to put in large developments. And we're not providing that opportunity with this, are we? Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, in this house, in this particular element, it doesn't address a general plan scale. But as we get the opportunity to review our general plan, we have the right, from a state standpoint, to insert elements that will address specific items that are specific to our situation. And one of those might be a redevelopment element. We've got a lot of old housing stock and several generations that have used a lot of our stuff, but drywall and plaster was never meant to last through the Victorian ages and all the way into, you know, two thousand some odd. So, there are going to be times when there will be large areas within the city. I mean, you know, it's relative, right? We've got three and a half square miles. So, we talk about a large area, but, you know, respectively, that it's going to be necessary for us to plan for an area when a developer comes in and says, "Hey, we'd like to, you know, redevelop this area for you." That's what we need in our quiver, in my opinion. But that's also going to be addressed in a different timeframe than this. I believe that this particular item is a for-year information type of circumstance in addition to the housing element itself and just to receive and file so that we know kind of where things are going. To me, it's a red flag, and I really appreciate it because it's made me do some additional homework. It's a brand-new world out there in planning and zoning. And if you don't believe it, a couple of years ago, we were in a conference, and the mayor was there, and when we were in that conference, a fellow got up, long hair, the whole thing, but he happened to be one of the major players in a company that does a lot of multifamily stuff and very successfully. But they pick and choose their plots. And he said, "Until you get people," because he was talking to architects and engineers on the panel, "until you get people involved in these things that you're talking about at a legislative standpoint, that have skin in the game, you're wasting your time. You're wasting all of our time. I'm not going to build in your state if that, if this is the way you want to play." And I think we really need to look at that and realize that there are some happy mediums in these things before we start, you know, making forty units to the acre the game plan. So, and also, I believe it's important for us to be able to reserve the right to redevelop intelligently. So, that's all I have to say. That's my soapbox.
Okay, well, thanks for your soapbox. It's very informative. One of the things, like I was telling the Mayor Pro Tem, when you go to Lega Cities, SCAG, anywhere, the mayor's other council members will ask you, "What's your RINA number?" And, you know, I tell them, "Oh, ours is really low," and they're like, "You're lucky," because Huntington Beach is the same way, you know, it's over like thirty thousand, and they're running out of property. So, everybody's fighting in the state about this. And, yeah, until we get skin in the game, I will give kudos to our legislating, our senator, and our assembly person who has put in skin in the game and fighting for us. And I asked her, well, she goes, "Is there anything else that you need?" And I go, "Well, you could get rid of Sequel and all this stuff." You know, if you got rid of half the mandates here in California for developing, we will have affordable housing. It's plain and simple. I mean, we're talking about, we talked about Dutch Brothers. We had to wait for the, well, who we had to wait for? Conrad?
Travel consultation.
Yeah, travel consultation. What does they have to do with Dutch Brothers? I have no idea. But she agrees. So, we do have representatives that agree that this is a bunch of nonsense, but it's not as many that we need. So, this has been going on and pushing, and just like Councilman Wilson said, I mean, if I was a developer, I want to come to California and develop. There's too much red tape, and they want to take away all their profits, and they think these, and it always, the buck always gets passed to who? The person that's buying, the consumer. So, instead of paying a hundred dollars a square foot with the state involved in stuff, we're paying nine hundred dollars a square foot, and that's all state problems, any development. But thank you for this. You did a good job, Gabriel. Were you forced to do it this time?
Yes, he was.
It's my job.
I mean, I know you missed those nice, quiet nights here when the power was out watching your, what, Lords of the Rings and Star Wars and stuff?
Yeah, that was good times.
Yeah. You weren't back there working on this plan, you know, trying to get some money out of it?
It definitely was in the back of my mind.
Scott didn't have you do that, you know? Said, "Will I come in tomorrow morning? This better be done." No?
No, nothing like that.
All right. Councilman Brown, Mayor Pro Tem, you have anything to add? So, public comment, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, so this is a receive and file. City Attorney, do you have anything to add? Okay, so it's receive and file. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, please vote. Good job, young man.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, see something, say something. Conrad's getting his steps again.
It made you, we're gonna have to replace that strip of carpet, too. So, Mayor Pro Tem Sabino asked for this. I don't know that I hit your marks, but I wanted to not necessarily address this as a program, but really comment on, do we have this coming up here, AJ? See something, say something? It never went through? Okay. I'm going to need the phone number. What's, give me one second, please. I'm sorry.
Hey, Conrad, I'm not seeing anything, so I'm going to say something. You know dad jokes. Hold it, I finally make you laugh?
Okay, I'll see if I can remember my presentation. I had a rant all ready to go. But what I did want to address is, and the ability and the request to our residents and our business owners and the people in the community, that if you see something, say something. And what we're looking for is the ability for us to get that information and to handle it properly. If you see something that isn't supposed to happen, a crime, something that's unusual, people, you know, we get, people come in here in public comment, urinating in public and dropping their pants or whatever else is going on. And then the first question is, "Did you report this?" And the answer we get is, "No, we did not." So, if you see it, say something. And the reason is multifold. First, we can get somebody out there, and our sheriffs are overworked, they're busy, but these are important quality-of-life issues that we can get somebody out there and deal with right away. And sometimes, if it's during the day and it's a low-intensity thing, we can get code enforcement out there. One of the reasons that we have, we are using the Sheriff's Dispatch for that, so that we can get this resolved quickly and take care of it. It's a quality of life, and it makes a community seem better, nicer, cleaner. Secondly, and behind the scenes, but more importantly, it allows us to track those occurrences, right? If we don't know there's a problem there, and statistically, we don't know there's a problem there, when we then go to look where we're going to assign our resources, where we're going to assign our time, where our deputies go to, where we put the effort into, we don't know to do this because it's never been reported. If at ten o'clock, somebody comes in and shoplifts at the grocery store, then we know, every day, then we know at ten o'clock, maybe we should have a cop standing in the grocery store. But if we don't say it, it will never stop. So, with this, we have worked with the Sheriff's Department to direct our residents to a direct non-emergency number at the Sheriff's Dispatch. It is, and I was going to splash this on the screen, so I apologize, nine zero nine, three eight seven, eight three one three. The other thing we've done with that is, we've reworked our city telephone tree. So, when you dial the City Hall, the very first option you get is option number one. If you have an emergency, call nine one one. If you need somebody to respond to your location and it's not an emergency, hit number one. It will go to Sheriff's Dispatch. The dispatcher then will determine, is it a public works issue? Is it an animal control issue? Is it a law enforcement issue? And then we can get the right person there in a timely manner. So, we're not leaving messages on cell phones and, you know, being frustrated weeks later that nothing happened and then having to come to City Council. What we don't want you to do is post it on Facebook. We do not monitor Facebook. We do not monitor nine two three one three, nine two three one three community. City staff never looks at that. You might as well get a bucket, take it in the basement, and yell into it, because that's about how much we hear from coming out of that. So, we do not monitor social media. If there's something, call nine oh nine, three eight seven, eight three one three, or call City Hall, press one. We will respond to that. We know that's there. Don't call the mayor because the mayor will call me, okay? And then I will call nine oh nine, three eight seven, eight three one three, okay? Don't call me because I will call nine oh nine, three eight seven, eight three one three. Don't tell your neighbors. Don't discuss with other people. Call that number, please. We'll post it. Call the City Line main number, press one. We'll post it, call the city line main number, press one. It goes to the sheriff's dispatch. We're set up so that we can handle this. The idea is to get that information in cleanly, quickly, with as little barrier as possible. And with this, we're hoping that we can get this out in the community, we will continue pushing this. I know I've, I've been a little bit of a smart ass, I apologize, but...
A little?
Okay, well, for me, a little bit. But, um, you know, we, we will continue pushing this in ev, in every conversation. We'll get this posted out. I really want, I apologize to not splash that on the board, but once again, nine oh nine three eight seven eight three one three, or the city main line, and press one. And if you see something, anything, please call, report it. The worst thing we'll do is tell you, thank you very much, we'll take a record of it, and we'll go forward. And the best thing we'll do is we'll have the ability then to manage these responses, these incidents and occurrences going into the future. It is not taking away from the sheriff's duty, it's not reducing the sheriff's time or ability to respond to calls. They prioritize their calls. They will not leave a, a crime to go take care of something that's not a crime. Let the dispatchers prioritize, but get the call in, and then we can handle it from there. Do we have any questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
Um, thank you for that presentation. Um, I appreciate it. I know that last time we were here, there were concerns about the issues in the community, people loitering and things of that sort. And just to be fully transparent, my own husband called me while I was out yesterday, not even, I was in Orange County, and he called me to report there was a homeless person who was having an issue in the grocery outlet parking lot entrance. And he calls me and he says, I need you to do something about it. And I said, you need to call the emerg, non-emergency line. You know, I can't do anything, I'm not there, you're there, you know? I can't give a description, I don't know if they're still standing there, what direction, you have to call. And so, I mean, it's not even just the residents who call us, I mean, my own spouse, you know, knowing that I'm, I'm not law enforcement, I can't deal with it. So, I appreciate that. Um, maybe after we can collaboratively, just maybe put up a graphic online.
We, we will get it posted to the website, and that's why I keep reiterating also. The cities, I, I really wanted up here, I apologize.
No.
And also, the city's phone number, option number one, will take you directly to that, that number. And to, to speak to your point, um, you know, I saw some a couple of weeks ago, I called the lieutenant, his first question is, why are you calling me?
Same.
Why aren't you calling dispatch? So, um, we've, we've all fallen into a bad habit, and we all need to break that bad habit to, to get, to get responses where we need them to go.
Do we have any updated numbers regarding how many hours are going to outside resources as well in being able to fill calls in Grand Terrace?
We do not since we last met, but we're working on reporting from the sheriffs.
Okay.
They're, they're getting their reporting, we're, they're still struggling with their reporting from their, their cyber issues a year ago.
Okay, all right, um, I, that's all I have for now. Again, thank you, um, I want to, maybe next month, we can just kind of get an update, and if we need to grow the campaign of see something, say something, we can revisit that at a later time.
We can, and we'll, we'll get it up on the board before the meeting, so it's, um, people can see it, and we'll get the number out there.
Okay.
But it is nine oh nine three eight seven eight three one d, one three. It'd be kind of rattling around in your brain like the old eighty-two plumbing commercials, right?
You gotta have like Jenny, I got your number?
That's right.
Eight six seven five three oh nine?
That's it.
All right, thank you for the report.
Well, I'm glad my wife's not the only one bothering me, too, just because, you know, we're married, she still thinks she's get, you know, special treatment. There's a homeless person here, when are you gonna have, uh, this place open, when are you gonna have that place open? I'm like, oh my goodness. So I told her to put a work request in, but, um, on that, besides the website, are, are we gonna get with our local paper about that number, too?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the paper. We have advertising space, we have every month in the paper, we'll put it in there as well.
Have we thought about a...
And we will put it on our social media as well.
Okay, how about local businesses handing him a flyer?
We can do that, I think that's the...
The donut shop, I know, he puts, you know, up all the time and stuff. This is what people know, to get the word out. So, you know, when...
We can do that, we can start growing this program as, I really wanted to start with this and grow this, and I, I think those are great ideas that we can explore.
Instead of neighborhood watch, would you have a mayor watch?
That's it.
I'll drive around, I don't care.
I thought you meant they watched you.
Oh, they do watch me.
I was just gonna say, in, maybe instead of a flyer, just an email blast to the chamber to share, um, with the businesses.
Okay.
And if they need any of us to come speak or share, then any of us can do that. I, I can, I don't mean to volunteer for this dius.
Yeah, well, one of the biggest thing of the flyer and the donut shop, because people go in there every day, and that's one. But, you know, it's a start, that we're starting. Any other questions before we go to public comment? No, public comment?
Bobby Forbes?
Okay.
Thank you. So Saturday night, when I messaged you, um, I did call dispatch first, because I always call them first. And they sent me to the sheriff's station downtown, which gave me a recording and basically said, come back on Monday, call back on Monday. So your new system maybe is working now, I hope. Um, the, um, dispatch ladies know me, and even last night, I had to park my vehicle out in the street because it broke down, and I was paranoid, because I never park a vehicle in the street. So I asked them for extra patrol, and I believe they did that, my car was still there. It wasn't broken into, they couldn't have stole it, because I couldn't drive it. Anyway, um, so I will try that system, and you are my last effort when I have what I think is an emergency, because I know the number to the sheriff's dispatch for years. Your phone system hasn't worked well in the past, I have brought this up numerous times. It disconnects you when you try to hit one or two or three or whatever often. So I hope that that can get fixed, um, and that this new way or this new number one, instead of it being code enforcement or animal control, it will be who we need it to be. But that is an issue with the community. When you change, when the phone number was changed from the number that we all knew for forty years, nobody knew. So they're calling the old number, and for a long time, it did not go through. It does now, if you call the old phone number, it goes through to city hall somehow. But that didn't happen for a long while. I didn't even know the phone number had changed, because I'm so used to calling people direct. However, um, I'm off subject, I apologize. The city needs to be more respective to the residents that live here. And they don't go on your website on a regular basis. You have a lot of new rules. A long time ago, you did a quarterly newsletter. I know you don't need more work to do, but maybe that, not just a flyer at the donut shop, maybe something going out to the mailboxes like Burt Tech does, to alert everyone of all these new rules. Nobody reads the city news, including me. I look at it, I'm like, I'm not using my phone to read this. It's in business, and there's a purpose, you have to use that paper, I know, because it's the closest one to you. But people don't get anything out of it. So they look at the pictures on the front page. So I don't think there's another option for newspaper, but please take into consideration doing a mail-out to the community with all of these new rules regarding animal control and the microchip, and not to announce the Blue Mountain hike, but to give them the new rules for ordinances and things that have changed at city hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, well, that's a good idea. I don't know what the cost for mailers, but maybe we could, when we get our water bill or something, we could look and put it on there as a, you know, see if we could save some cost on sending that out. Council have anything else? City Attorney, do we have anything? Okay, this is a receive and file, this is a good start to the program, just, we could just build up on it and getting the information out and getting the phone numbers out and, and, uh, checking our phone system, uh, the maintenance check, you know, once a week or something, make sure we're good to go. Because I know that last time, we had to reset because of power, we didn't check it. So, um, all right, so do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
And Councilor Brown, please vote.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Conrad. Uh, future agenda items, as a time where city council may propose an item to discuss or any actions, the council have any future agenda items they want to bring up? Go ahead.
So, hey, um, I'll start out this, uh, in the future agenda items column. I think, I was talking with the city attorney about it earlier, it's called a motion to reconsider. And what I'd like to bring to your attention is something that we did as a body at our last meeting, we sort of set a precedent. And I just want us to be aware of that, because it's almost like it went right over our heads. And, and nobody did anything wrong, and, and so I'm not going down there. I just think that we need to, um, well, I'll just explain to you, you know, when we were doing the CDBG grants, we approved a ten thousand dollar grant for a, um, a running club, and it's a great organization, so this isn't about them. But what it is, is it's about us, because we did something we've never done before. We approved a grant request without anybody from the organization coming in front of us and making a presentation. And also, that night, FSA got, we approved theirs, and typically, they send somebody, and they didn't that night either. And so I just, um, and so I was talking with our city manager about it, and I said, you know, we, I, I just felt that we had done something we hadn't done before, and we should, that we should have paid closer attention to. And, um, so I was trying to find out the right way to address it. Would it be a motion to reconsider? Would it just be, you know? And so when talking with the city manager, and I said, you know, we violated our own procedures, and he said, and he, the next day, we had a conversation, he said, funny thing about that, there's no procedures in place. And so I think maybe there's where the, the issue could be addressed at, is that we just put the procedure in place that we want for the, for the future, so that if we want a, whatever the entity is, the representative from that entity that's requesting taxpayer money, that they'll come and make a presentation. That's the only thing. Because I actually had a lot of questions, and none of them could get answered about it. I had to go on the website, and I found out, you know, it's, uh, it's a great, great, great organization, I love organizations like that, after-school programs and things, but I just think that we owe it to our, our residents and the taxpayers to be more accountable for their money.
So on the application, does it say to be present for any questions to approve this grant?
Does not, there's no requirement.
So we can add that to there for questions? Or have a representative there, so we can make sure we're doing...
I believe that's Councilman Allen's request, and, yeah, we can add that on there, that...
Okay.
Or set a criteria, and, and some of the discussion, the discussion points that we had is that, um, you know, that, that the organ, it's, first, that they come and actually plead their case in person. Secondly, that they provide the services in Grand Terrace, because this is, this is a great group, but their services, while they're open to Grand Terrace residents, are provided primarily outside the city. And we can set criteria that, you know, like I said, come, complete your case, you provide the services in the city, or some other mechanism, it really is up to you to determine the criteria. But, um, right now, there is nothing. I mean, there, there could be some, theoretically, some organization from Florida could come in here and ask for money and never show up, and we would have to consider them.
So, Councilman Allen, you want to have an agenda to look at the application, to add these modifications in there, so the, the nonprofit will be here to plead your case for questioning?
I don't think we need an agenda. If, if this is something that, from the, the tenor of the discussion, I'll, I'll take it, and before the city attorney slaps me, um, I'll, I'll take it under advisement, how's that?
City Attorney, can we do that?
He can take it under advisement, so long as there's no direction. He can consider it, and if he needs a policy, he can bring it back.
So, but my, my original, the motion to reconsider, how does that, you wanted to
speak on that?
Okay, so tho, those are two different things. So i, if you're looking to do a motion to reconsider, the motion to reconsider would be to undo, potentially undo, the approval that you gave last time.
That particular agenda item?
That specific agenda item. So the question is, do you want to do that? And the procedure would be, the council would have to approve by a majority, three out of five tonight, to bring it back on the next agenda for a reconsideration motion. But under Rosenberg's, uh, Rules of Order, it requires a two-thirds vote to actually pass the motion for reconsideration. So you would need three tonight to put it on the agenda, and then you need four at that meeting to actually approve the reconsideration. And if it passes, then we will put it on the next meeting thereafter to recon, to have a discussion on that item again.
So, you're trying to get the money pulled back from the organization?
No, 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 it's not that I'm trying to get the money pulled back from that organization, it's just that, um, there was no, I, I wouldn't mind if we had it on the agenda again, and the resident, and the, and the, and the representatives came and made a presentation. However, that's, what, four months? That would be four months down the road. But that one organization did say that, that running club, that they weren't planning on, that they wouldn't be doing anything until later in the year, anyway. But that wasn't my purpose. My intent is that we put a, get a procedure and a policy in place, so that in the future, this doesn't happen.
So the future doesn't happen against, we're not in the same boat, and that could be, uh, City Attorney?
Correct. So if, if we're not talking about the past, we're only talking prospectively of the future, then we could put that on as a future agenda item for procedures as to how we would consider CDBG awards or something of that sort.
No, I, I like it, because I think if you're gonna come up and ask for money, you should have enough time to come up here and plead your case, because questions do arise. But as long as we're not drilling them in the ground on something, you know, just common questions, and, uh, one, and then two, you know, is that money being used in the city of Grand Terrace? That's the big procedure for our residents here, so they don't have to travel outside. Especially, that was a different county, too. And even though the, the, um, staff members say we fell within the guidelines, I think we should make sure that that money is just used for our, uh, organizations here, so...
Pardon me, if I remember correctly, their office was outside, but the program was going to be local?
Their, their office is outside, and they, they're essentially a running club, and then does like five Ks and, and small running meets.
Correct.
And there, there are none scheduled for in Grand Terrace. Grand Terrace residents can be involved, but those events happen outside the city as well.
Okay, it was my understanding, like, training and such would occur here.
They were gonna open it up to the Grand Terrace residents, and it's gonna still be at another location. So we're trying to keep it in this location. Not like it's, uh, Dance Dementia or one of the dance clubs, yeah, our residents that are here, and they, they're going somewhere to compete, that's something different. But they need help with their, you know, policy, or their things. Okay, so, under advisement sounds good to me, as you guys all agree on it?
Uh, under advisement.
So...
I, I, I do, I do want to comment on this, though, because, for example, if FSA had their request for CDBG funding for the senior nutrition program, I don't need to hear from them. So I wouldn't, just because their representative was unable to show up for some reason to a council meeting, I wouldn't want to delay approval of that funding in that case. So I would just request that any policy have some reasonable flexibility in it, you know, and we had, you know, taken, you know, practicality and into consideration if someone was unable to attend in person.
And that was the thing, Councilman Brown, they will always come. This is the first year they never showed up, so...
Well, I, I, I've worked with FSA since two thousand and two, and so, um...
Well, I'm sure they're great, yeah, they're great organization, but they've always, they've always come and presented to us, and, and, you know, they've al, I...
But I, I do, I do share Councilman Allen's concerns about the running organization and other organizations that would be requesting funding. I think we have plenty of groups here in the city of Grand Terrace that provide services to our residents, and they would be my, you know, preference. to our residents and they would be my, you know, preference. They always get top priority, so.
Okay.
So just to calm my anxiety over this $10,000, you know, that we approved for this running club?
$10,000?
Yeah, it's a $10,000.
Oh, yeah, nevermind, I'm thinking something else. Go ahead.
And so, but that's reimbursable, re, that requires reimbursement, right? So they can just come in here and ask for their 10 grand without?
No, I got, I have to double check. I do believe it's reimbursable. You are right. Yeah.
Hmm, I don't, no, okay.
No, I'm sorry, Councilman Allen, I thought we were on the community benefit fund. Yeah, no, you're right. Okay. So you want to move forward on it from now on, do like the, under advisement, you know, that the, set precedence on what the, the guidelines are for these, even that annual grant?
You have discussed that there's no re, reason in my mind to bring a future agenda item. We'll, we'll look at our procedures before we do this again.
Because that was the first time they did the annual grant, right, with their city?
This was their first time. And it was the fir, the first time that I recall that we did CDBG stuff without somebody coming in and pleading their case. So, but before we do it again, I'm, I'm hearing your discussions and I don't know that we need to move forward with anything formal.
Councilman Wilson?
Just to be clear, if they want the money, they better show up. I mean, in a development standpoint, you don't show up at a tentative map hearing, people don't think you're really serious. So I, I don't see any problem with that. I think it's, I think it's completely appropriate. We should be able to ask questions and so on, and we should be involved. Because if it is an entity that is going to get a benefit from this community, that's the whole point. We're using money from our community for the benefit of the community, then we need to make that nexus. So that's my thought.
All right, well, did you hear what he said?
Yeah, I heard what all of you said.
All right. So we'll go ahead and close. Does anybody else have any future agendas they want to bring up? Now we'll close that and item I, Councilmember Communications, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to share that the mayor and I met with our state Senator Rosalie Otobob this afternoon to talk with her about including Grand Terrace or getting the California Office of Emergency Services to include Grand Terrace and recognize our declaration for emergency under the wind incident and power outages that occurred here. And the senator is, is working tirelessly in her efforts to be an advocate for the city, not only to get us our emergency declaration recognized, but several other state initiatives that are very meaningful to our residents here. And I think I'd just like to let the mayor elaborate on that because there were a lot of other things aside from that declaration. But the thing that's meaningful to our residents is if, if she's successful, we, the city will receive reimbursement for our costs associated with the power outages. The other thing that I brought up to her was the fact that there is grant funding that's available for businesses that suffered losses during those, under the emergency declaration. Those things aren't available to our businesses here in Grand Terrace because the state's not recognizing our declaration. So if that happens, there may be some potential grant funding for those, you know, that can demonstrate their losses as being directly related to those outages from the winds. So we're hopeful and optimistic that she will be successful and we're going to continue to pursue that along with Conrad's and staff in their efforts. And we're very pleased with the work she's doing on our behalf.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Last Wednesday, I attended this San Bernardino County Homeless Partnerships Central Valley Continuum of Care Regional Network Meeting. And at that meeting, some of the things that were discussed were, there was a Office of Homeless Services website, um, is active and running and they talked about, the representative talked about 3.9 million funding for the next three years. And so they're going to be adding drones with thermal imaging to scan for homeless encampments. They already have some and that they're using, and they're adding more. Also kiosks for homeless services to folks who are experiencing homelessness, be able to access services through kiosks strategically placed around throughout the county for those individuals who don't have access to, you know, a cellphone or internet services, they can use the kiosks. The sheriff's department's representative also, and the homeless service representative, they partnered together talking about some asset mapping and gap analysises that they're doing. And also then we talked about some funding opportunities from the city of San Bernardino. And the last but not least was the introduction of the staff team from St. John's Community Health Clinic on Waterman Avenue, 1500 North Waterman Avenue. A complete array of physical and mental and dental health services, including job placement and support services at no cost to the resident. That's St. John's Community Health Clinic. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Wilson? You have anything?
Just real quick, I've been invited to the enhanced recharge phase 1B for the Santa Ana River Project, ribbon cutting and a dedication ceremony. It's open to the public Thursday, February 20th at 9:00 AM. And that is located at 8010 Cone Camp Road Highland, if you so desire. It's been very entertaining to go to these various MWD events and I think it, it's very educational, so.
Well, thanks for going and representing the city. Appreciate it. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended League of Cities, NADA Mayor and New Council's Conference, a lot of training on everything from ethics, social media, land use, budget, monitoring budgets and such. And so it, it was great to meet with everyone from throughout the state who visited, not only just from within our region. At one point, they kind of corralled us into small cities. And so we were able to meet different small cities throughout the state. So that was great. And tomorrow, I've been invited to sit in on a meeting with Congressman Aguilar's office just to discuss the items that are of need here in Grand Terrace and to be able to advocate and lobby for some of those important things. So I'm looking forward to that. We do have some severe rain in the forecast coming. So just to our residents, if there's an inkling of a breeze out there, please be ready for that and you know how to reach us. We're always prepared and thank you to Conrad and staff for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
What was that assembly bill that, look, Assembly Member, Tisha was trying to pass or get through? So she's trying to get through where we'll have a $7,500 tax credit for generators and other repair. So why I'm saying that, because we finally got state representative that's, that are taking care of Grand Terrace. I don't feel like the stepchild anymore when we go to Sacramento or call somebody and say, well, no, they're not your reps. So, and they, they want to take care of Grand Terrace. They knew that Grand Terrace took care of them during the voting thing and, and it's just a breath of fresh air far as our state. Because, you know, being on here for 10 years, I think this is the farthest we've gone with state representatives. And Congressman Aguilar, Mayor Protem, can you ask him how are grants going for the storm drain? And, but, uh, thank you for that. But yeah, when we met with the senator, you know, she's working hard for that and there's a lot of red tape and, but one other things, a couple of other things I talked to her about that, the need for the city, of course, was the homelessness and, you know, I know Councilman Allen's on that board, but I was thinking, how do they pay these companies that take care of these homeless people when a lot of them don't use the resources? Especially when I go to San Bernardino after these meetings and I see just like Tent City out there and on your Hunts Lane. So they're just moving from one place to the other. And I think instead of appointing, greet, that they start holding these companies accountable, I don't know if they do or not, like the school system. You're not in school, you don't get paid. You don't take care of the homeless person in the programs, you don't get paid instead of having a blanket check. And the other one was on mental health and I talked about our Wallace House here, how the, the CEO said it was going to be taking care of people and doing all that. And I told her, I go, basically, it's a flop house. They come from the hospital, they flopped their head here, in the morning, we got the walking dead. They walk everywhere. They're not getting help. Families are looking for help. They're not getting help. The state should mandate these little mental health facilities that follow their guidelines where they are going to get the proper treatment and not be a flop house. So she said she's going to look into that. So I'm just, I'm proud of the, our senator and assemblywoman taking care of us. I'm proud of them putting their neck out for us. I'm proud of them looking for the future of Grand Terrace and the surrounding areas that they're representing. And they're fighting the good fight. So I'm, I'm very proud to have them as our state legislature. And I thought your best part of the new mayor conference was hanging out with me. No? So. It, it was a good conference. The food was not so good. I had better food in the Marine Corps. And Jeff, you would have, if you would have went there, you would have had better food in the Army too, so. As the only lasagna that I never burnt the roof of my mouth, it was so cold. So my dead Italian grandmother was probably flipping over in her grave when she saw that I was trying to eat, so. Yeah, no, well, I never eat prison food. I never, something about an Emmy smiling and serve me? No, I, I just ate a cup of noodles, that was it. I didn't, no, I, no way Jose. I don't care how long we're there in a riot. But let that go, uh, City Manager, any communication?
I have nothing. Do either of the chiefs have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, you are correct. We do have some significant rain coming in. It looks like around here between four to six inches, it is going to be an atmospheric river. We do have prepositioned units throughout the county, including USAR teams. And we do have plenty of sand and sandbag over at the station here in the city of Grand Terrace. That is all.
Yeah, first and foremost, I want to thank Conrad and Mayor Protem Sabino for bringing up this, this initiative with this see something, say something. This has been something that's been kind of near and dear to the sheriff's department for many years, kind of getting the word out there. Um, you know, because, you know, if you know any history about the sheriff's department, we, we have more volunteers that donate hundreds of thousands of hours. I mean, we, our sheriff's department would not run if it wasn't for volunteers helping out and being the eyes and ears of the community. And so I want to get it out there and just basically say, you know, obviously we, we've got the, the 909-387-8313 for you, Conrad. We, we obviously have that, but, but we do appreciate.
Maybe we should have those cheerleaders do a cheer for that, you know?
I, I want to, I want to say this, that, you know, there, it goes without saying that, you know, when you, when you have a, a tight knit community and you are using social media and, and the word is getting around and, 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 you know, you, you are that force in the community, crooks don't want to come to that area because they know that they're going to get caught. You know, they go to areas where, you know, where there's not a lot of resistance. And so those, those typically become the communities that get, you know, that get targeted. So get on there, obviously become, you know, use the community watch group, you know, spread that information around. But we, we cannot stress enough as the sheriff's department that if there is something actively going on, please, 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 obviously call 911 or use that non-emergency line to get it in there. Because it helps not only with a better response time, but getting, getting deputies out there, but also to make sure for future, you know, planning and getting funding and things like that, we have to show those, those statistics. You know, if we have issues with, with homelessness and it's, it's targeting a particular area, we need to know that. You know, we have very limited staffing and, and deputy coverage in, in most areas of Grand Terrace just due to the nature of, of the way the, the contracts work and things like that. But we have to kind of allocate those services. So we are encouraging the, the, the community to make sure that you guys are calling those things in so we can get those resources allocated. But, you know, behalf of the sheriff's department, thank you so much for, for addressing this. And there's much work to be done. We can, there's a ton of information we can get out there. I, I do want to let the community know, you can go onto the sheriff's main site. And if you're interested, all the community, the, the call logs for not only Grand Terrace, but all the different stations that the sheriff's department services, they're all available on there 24 hours a day. You can go on there and you can look, go in the media section, all the call logs are in there. Any of the press releases for not only Grand Terrace, but all the community areas, there's tons of information on there to educate yourself. So use that, that resource. And then by all means, we're always here for you. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I use my 55 Chevy truck as a neighborhood watch vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Ring mounts aren't optional though, right?
What was that?
Ring mounts, I can't do a ring mount on there like I had in the Ring Core 50 cal or anything?
No.
No. Water balloons?
Uh, yes.
Okay. No, but yeah, please, if you see something, say something. And one other thing I want to mention, what the, the senator did say, and I experienced this and, and I had told you that during that hurricane in October with me and my wife and a one-year-old and two-year-old was, that's off my bucket list, I always wanted to do that. But the government isn't going to be there right away. It's going to be neighbors helping neighbors, but you need to be prepared, especially if you're a native in this state. We just had a little earthquake. We should always be prepared for earthquakes. Water is essential, canned food's essential. You know, just be prepared because it might take a while. I mean, we might, you know, have gas lines break, we might have power lines, we might have big fires. I know maybe Blue Mountain might erupt, I have no idea. But be prepared because the government's here to help, but the government's going to take a while. There, these gentlemen here are going to have priorities, what they have to take care of. And during that hurricane, I didn't see any, well, I finally saw the National Guard fly by like six days later and then are giving out water. So you have to be prepared, have a backup plan. We're trying to get with the SCE, he's going to be doing a workshop. And then I'm probably going to ask for volunteers because not only the workshop, but they're going to be filling out the paperwork so we can get electric generators, oxymoron, but generators that can be plugged in for those residents. But also if you have a neighbor who's a senior, we'll let them know so if they need a ride, we have a bus service to bring them over there to have it filled out. Because we also have a lot of seniors in this area that need help. And they're afraid to ask for help because they don't want to lose their independence. But always be a good neighbor, help each other out, you know, just be prepared. And part of that be prepared is if you see something, say something. If you do see somebody committing a crime. We have been so institutionalized for the last 10 years because Prop 47, SP 109, that nothing's been taken care of. Well, Prop 36 passed. We're doing baby steps to make it right. We're going to go back in and we're going to make it right, so. And the only way to really make it right is to call. We need documentation. We need that for our officers. One, like Lieutenant said, so we get additional funds. And two, to make sure the officer is covered just in case something happens. Because everything might escalate. The worst thing was when I was in college and they still do today, is domestic violence. You called out on that. That's the worst call an officer can get on. So please call. If you notice like a store that's getting ransacked once a week and their store policy is not to call, well, guess what? You can still call because you're witnessing a crime and you can press charges. Because there's nothing worse than seeing an armed robbery, having a gun pointed at you. I had it a couple of times and then shooting at you. That's not a great thing. So you need to call. You can call if you see something too. All right? So I'll get off my soapbox now, law enforcement's my soapbox. But anyway, oh, you forgot, the Blue Mountain hike is coming up. But, anyway, oh, you forgot, the Blue Mountain hike is coming up.
The Mountain hike is coming up, what's?
March first.
March first? March first, thank you.
So, hopefully, it's not raining this year. Uh, last year, yeah, it did rain and we had a new employee break his leg. So, but, you know, have a good time, let people know. Um, I don't know if the Girl Scouts are going to be hiding behind rocks and selling cookies, you know, I don't know, but everybody's invited, and even animals, but they got to be on a leash and make sure they're not, you know, aggressive and stuff. But, stay on the trail and just have a good time and look at the beautiful scenery. I don't know, it's not as green as it has been up there, but it's, it's still going to be nice. That's a great event, and I know, uh, I think the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Brown is having a race up there. That's part of your initiation for being new on the council.
My legs are dispered.
Okay, we'll, we'll give you half a hillhead start. You could take one of those donkeys and ride it up there. Anyway, we're closing in memory of the Grand Terrace resident, Eric Lopez. Our thoughts and prayers are for the family. God knows when you take your first breath and he knows when you're going to take your last. You never know when you're, it might be the last goodbye to your family. So, you know, prayers for comfort for the Lopez's family, and, uh, I didn't know Eric, but, you know, it, it's still hard and, and for his young kids and stuff. But, uh, Grand Terrace is losing too many residents and from accidents, and, you know, we just got to be. One thing I haven't seen is defense driving that decent teachers in school. Always think what somebody's going to do. Don't assume they're going to stop at that stop sign or traffic signal, assume that they're not. Uh, the next regular meeting will be March eleventh, I won't be here, I'll be babysitting in South Carolina. The Mayor Protem will be running her first meeting, so please be nice to her. Um, if she needs any help, uh, Councilmember Wilson's be sitting right next to her. And, uh, any request items placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. So, once again, thank you, everybody, and God bless and good night.